We're walking the dogs, no dogs, no leashes.
Did you have a squirt gun?
And I was just like this, I had to get out of the car, grab both of them, jerk off the ground, spank them, and then send them down the road to find the dogs and the leashes.
Uh oh. Man, I'll tell you, there's some tough moms around here.
I got it right.
You were grounded for the rest of the week. Then I called Amber Palmer, I'm like, did you get all that on your ring doorbell? She was like, no, but I saw you. She was like, you look very angry. I was just going to throw my lunch.
Hey, that was fortunate that you knew that.
Then I caught it. This was me, not someone else.
Weird, we're at the animal shelter today, we didn't see the dogs there, so.
No. Dang it.
Did they get chipped?
I found them in the bushes hiding. I'm sure they were scared that their owners were
Hiding.
Fighting. I'm sure they were concerned for their well-being.
Yeah.
Long doesn't act like this.
Right, yeah. It's kids, you know.
Well, they'll come up with a story by the time we get back to them.
Oh, yeah.
Sure.
Hello, they're your kids. Of course they're gonna have a good story.
It is one o'clock on Tuesday, July 1st. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
It is Commissioner Landgraf's turn to do the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's bow our heads. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day and all that you have done. We ask for your wisdom and guidance in all that we do. We ask that you watch over and protect everyone, especially our first responders in all that we do. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Next on the item is approval of the minutes. Any changes? Add one little change, but other than that, they'll stand as amended and approved. Item... Pedicament, this is a time where we give the public an opportunity to come and comment on any item that is not on the agenda. We give you five minutes, and when you do come forward, please state your name. Item six.
Mayor and Commissioners. Mayor and Commissioners, item 6A, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a request from Matt Byer, Athletic Director at Garden City High School, for approval of an aircraft landing in the corporate limits of the city of Garden City, Kansas, on September 12th, 2025, at approximately 6:00 PM at Garden City High School pursuant to code section 14-71. And I will tell you, this is a request to one made in, similar to one made in previous years.
Any questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve an aircraft landing in the corporate limits of the city on September 12th, 2025, at approximately 6:00 PM at Garden City High School Football Stadium pursuant to code section 14-71.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
That item passes.
Item 7A is a monthly sales tax report.
Which looks really good.
Any questions on that? All right. 7B is just the customary notice from Cox. When they make changes to their basic lineup, that's pursuant to the franchise agreement. Meetings of note. Item 8A, anything on there requiring RSVPs, please let us know. I think we're ready for the appropriation ordinance, and if approved, that would be ordinance number 2590-2025A.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number 2590-2025A.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item pass.
Next item is under new business, 12A. The governing body has asked to consider and approve an interlocal agreement between the city of Garden City and Finney County regarding the use of sales tax proceeds from the anticipated November 4th, 2025 Finney County Sales Tax Initiative. Earlier this year, the state of Kansas passed House Bill 2275, which gave Finney County the authorization to levy a half-cent local retailer's sales tax for the purpose of financing the construction or remodel of a courthouse, jail, law enforcement, center, facility, or other county administrative facilities. In August, the Board of County Commissioners will vote on specific ballot language for consideration on the November 4th ballot. The proposed agreement outlines the administrative responsibilities of both agencies should the ballot initiative pass. The agreement outlines that the county would be responsible for the administration of the sales tax proceeds, and it includes the continuation of the joint Sales Tax Oversight Board, which I will add has served both entities well in administering the 2017 sales tax. Finally, the agreement identifies generally the proposed projects the sales tax could finance, or I think uses of the sales tax. However, it should be noted that until the final ballot language is approved, that that's the official language that shows and appears on the ballot. Finney County Board of Commissioners will consider this agreement at their next regular meeting on July 7th, but we have been working diligently over the last month, particularly on that uses item. And there's a lot of moving parts to this, because you can say, hey, build a jail and remodel an LEC, but what does that mean? And as we've talked over the last several months, if not getting close to a year now, part of that being the relocation of the, of not only Garden City Police Department, which is our focus, but of the Sheriff's Office as well. And so kind of finalizing that, figuring out everybody's interest, and also understanding the differences between city government and county government, where we're a little bit more streamlined administratively, and they have elected officials across different departments, and so different groups that you have to kind of visit with and negotiate with to get that all solved. I would say the last four months, those conversations have been extremely productive, extremely fruitful, and getting this agreement lined up before the county commission officially considers ballot language for a November ballot, I think is a big accomplishment. So the alternatives are, you can approve this agreement, or you may not approve this interlocal agreement. Our recommendation is that you recommend, you recommend the agreement, and there's no direct financial impact associated with approving this agreement. However, it does outline future use of sales tax proceeds, how it would be utilized should the ballot initiative pass later this year.
Any questions for Matt?
Yeah, I did have a question. So I emailed Matt and asked about, so this, I was kind of wanting to find out about this idea that where it says construction, where they could do all the things that we've talked about, but then they could use it for any county administrative facility. So the thing, I know that the success of the 2017 Sales Tax Initiative and all the things we did was that we, as a city, I know, we really stayed true to what the voters said yes to. And so the thing, it's really hard. I had asked if there was any draft language, or how are they going to limit that, and I know that you said that that's not going to come until August. The only thing is, I just want to make sure that, and caution us, that, you know, we really make sure that what we've agreed as a commission, or what I've agreed as a commission, was the remodel of the LEC, the building of the new jail, and if we can use some of those funds to help us, that's great. But I, when it says any county facility, administrative facility, that's where that mission drift. I wanted to make sure, and I know, and I appreciate you being honest about, though they don't have that ballot language done yet.
Yeah. And the, it was a good question. That language is the exemption in the state statute that when counties, counties have to ask for the authority to go to the voters to approve sales tax above a certain increment, above a certain amount, or if an increment's different than what is explicitly authorized in state statute, a little bit different than cities. And when they go and ask for that, there's the exemption in the statute that lists, it's kind of a history of different counties going after different taxes. They pick the one that they're going after that fits, fits the intent of their ballot issue. And this is the language of the exemption in the statute. So that's written more broadly.
Right.
But could be, you know, obviously could be, when the county approves it, approves the language, could be narrowed by the ballot issue, or could be, I don't know if it could be expanded or not. I think it probably has to stay within the hash marks of that exemption. So, but I do think they could be more, they have the option of being more explicit. Now, it is not uncommon, we do it on our sales tax, to have language that would allow for the flexibility of use of proceeds above and beyond what's required for the ballot issue, so that you aren't stuck with a pool of money at the end, because you have to provide notice to the state to stop collecting once you've achieved that. So there's always going to be this increment left over. We use the language in all of our sales, special purpose sales tax of property tax stabilization.
Right.
Which allows that to be a supplemental cushion in the general fund for anything that's collected in excess of the specific purpose.
And I just want to encourage, as you're working with them, and I know as the mayor and vice mayor are working with them, that the ballot language is very specific. And then also, like you said, if it's for property tax stabilization, I just want to make sure we're really upfront with the voters. Because again, I think this is a very important opportunity to really, again, build in the infrastructure of our community, but I just want to make sure that we are staying very true to the mission, so.
Any other questions?
That was the same concern I had too. So thanks for bringing that up, Commissioner Andrew, and thanks for the answers, Matt, on that explanation. Collaboration is very important between us and the county, and so I believe moving forward, that's one of the things that we would be informed on as well, as those conversations kind of come to fruition. So we appreciate that colorful comment. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we approve the interlocal agreement between the city of Garden City and Finney County regarding the use of sales tax proceeds from the anticipated November 4th, 2025 Finney County Sales Tax Initiative.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second by Commissioner Ortiz. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passes.
Not unrelated to the last discussion, the governing body has asked to consider and approve in 12B a memorandum, a memorandum of understanding between the city of Garden City and Finney County to share the facility located at 1210 Fleming. At the May 6th, 2025 city commission meeting, the governing body approved the lease agreement between the city of Garden City and Duane Coster Trust and Kathy Coster Trust for the use of 1210 Fleming. This agreement included about 24,000 square feet. Since that time, the property owners have identified a design professional and construction company to work through the remodel of the space. In those discussions, preliminary drawings were completed to identify whether or not there would be sufficient space to move both Garden City Police Department and Finney County Sheriff's Department into that space. Some of our subsequent discussions around this whole issue of the sales tax have identified maybe an increased willingness than we've heard in prior months or discussions from Finney County Sheriff's Office, and I think an acknowledgement that it was a pretty good-sized space, first of all, and second of all, the benefits of co-locating during the interim period, I think were identified as well. Maybe not universally by everyone in the county, but certainly enough to explore what that possibility might look like. With the additional space that the city commission would consider as a separate agenda item today, both GCPD and Finney County Sheriff's Office believe that there's sufficient space for the agencies to co-locate in the facility. The memorandum of understanding before the governing body outlines both the city and county's intent to share the costs of relocating evenly. This includes operations, capital furniture, fixtures, and equipment. Both agencies recognize that the costs associated with the project are going to be limited, and will reuse existing furniture and equipment where possible. And it should be noted that the MOU may be updated based on final design footprint of the building to align cost proportionally with allocated square footage. So, you know, I think the best way I could, I could explain it is there will be sheriff's space, there will be PD space, and there will be shared space. As a general rule, we'll try to reuse as much of what's in the LEC if we can work this out. It's possible to keep the FFE number down, but anything that the sheriff's office needs, evenly means if the sheriff's office needs it, the sheriff's office will buy it. If the police department needs it, the police department will buy it. And if the shared space needs it, we'll split it 50/50. That's the premise. And when we break down the cost of the square footage, it'll be proportionate to the square footage that the county has, the square footage that the city has, and 50/50 over the shared space. So that hasn't been finalized yet. It's getting closer, but you know, I think we're, we're moving walls around something between 800 and 1,200 feet, square feet right now. So I think it's, I think it's the bell lap of figuring out how we can, we can use the space that's identified in the original, original lease plus the added leased space that would be in the item before you, later. Also, I did have a question from two commissioners, whether or not they, there was still the option to buy this facility. There is. There's no lease payment for a couple of months. I do think there's an opportunity to re-raise that discussion at some point, but I think step one is figuring out if we can get a use agreement, the principle of a use agreement agreed to, if we get the square footage worked out, kind of get that game plan, get the design final, and then if we, if there's interest, you know, potentially a joint meeting discussion too, interest in taking up the purchase price. That purchase price is good for about a year. After the first 30 days, it went up 2.5%, but we have the option throughout the entire lease to buy the building. It just, the price escalates 2.5% on, on or close to the anniversary date of the, of when we agreed to the lease. I think it's June 1st of every year.
Any questions?
I do, but if someone wants to go first, I feel bad if I...
Go ahead.
Okay. So I just want to make sure as far as, so I was surprised that this was the first time, and I appreciate Matt's talking about that the sheriff's department was wanting to move in, because I thought they were going to stay where they were at until the absolute last possible minute.
They were.
So that, so that was a, yeah, that was a surprise to me. The other thing I want to make sure, I don't want, you know, we've waited so long to get the police in a place, and I don't want the remodel for them, for the sheriff's department. I appreciate them, and I know they're valuable, but our, my main concern is for our police department. And so I don't want anything to hinder them getting in the building sooner or later, just because the county is going to fail to act. So that's the one thing. The second thing about this whole issue is, I want to make sure that we are the people that they pay and not, that we, that we, I mean, that we're the leaseholder, and that we are the ones who, because that way we manage and we decide what we're going to do with that space. But I...
Yes.
Yeah, I was, I was really surprised as far as, like I said, that they wanted to move in, but I don't want to see this take any more time. The police department, we've worked on this for a year, we fought in lots of battles, and I mean, now it's time to get them. We made the hard decisions, it was uncomfortable, but I just want to see our police department get in a place that they can actually use ASAP.
And I think the, those are all points, and those, I think those are points that your staff has echoed during these discussions with the county, and the, I also understand that this commission has, for years, held very highly in your goals, your, your, your goals primarily, but also your actions and your words at these meetings, that there is value in working with Finney County. And so, your credit to Finney County when this window opened up, that it's like, well, if we're, you know, if we're going to pursue this, we need to pursue this now, because we're fixing on design in this place and going. So if we're going to do something together, it needs to get before both boards, so that we don't slow up the design and construction of the relocation of our facility. And to their credit, they were willing to kind of move heaven and earth to see if we could get there. Now, you know, what will happen here is if we approve this, then they will approve it next Monday. So I will tell you, it's not a done deal until they approve it. These are, you know, these are, these are staffs negotiating with each other around concepts with some, you know, elected representation by virtue of the Finney County Sheriff's Office being there. And, but, you know, it's not a done deal until this board talks about it, and then the other board talks about it. But I hope you find value in that we were willing to say, yes, I know there's competing values going on here. We want to be able to get our facility going, but our police department recognizes the value of working together with the Finney County Sheriff's Office. It sounds like Finney County Sheriff's Offices are raising higher in their priorities, working in, being co-located with us over the next four to five years. And the Finney County Commission appears to have that interest as well. So hopefully, we're taking a well-used timeout of a couple of weeks to see if we can work this out. And if we can't, we will move forward exactly as you described.
Right. But my highest priority, I'm honest with you, is the Garden City Police Department. I mean, I, I agree with you with working together, but my highest priority is that. The other thing I want to make sure of is, is it talks about that they, that the owner of the building is going to choose the design professionals. I just, I didn't know if they had chosen those, or who they were choosing to work with, or...
GM CN is who we've been working with.
I was going to, thank. And then you have a...
I just wanted to add something. You're worried about the finish of the city portion prior to finishing the building. The, the property that's available for the sheriff's department wouldn't be available until October 31st.
Oh, okay.
So the city portion would be already in process prior to the sheriff department ever getting that facility. But the lease needs to be determined before we design the police department.
Right.
And that, that's why this process is in right now. I just wanted to let you know.
Thanks, Kurt.
Yeah, I was just going to say, state your name for the record.
Yeah, thanks. No, I appreciate that. Like I said, I, I'm excited that they want to do that, and I'm like, yeah, I think this is elevated, that they see the value, not in working with this, but they see the value of hopefully vacating the building so that when the sales tax passes, that they can get in there quicker, you know, and then their remodel can begin. But I know we've put the police department off so many times, and I just, I don't want to do that anymore.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment, and I kind of, just kind of like to express the fact that the discussions up here on the panel are pretty important to kind of make these decisions. And I know it's been taking a while. I appreciate all the work that staff has been involved. Also, with Costers kind of being patient with us as well, they've, they've kind of had a building that they've been sitting on for a while that could be put to good use for the police department and sheriff's office. We just didn't realize it at the time. So being patient on some of these discussions, and then, you know, collaborations with the entities is very important, and that's, I think that's an important thing to kind of look back on, is the fact that we didn't jump on something right away to make that decision back in January. So I think just thanks to the panel up here, thanks to you commissioners and staff, and your leadership, Matt, for at least just, you know, I know we needed yesterday, or we needed it two years ago.
Yeah.
But it's, it's one of those things where these are hard decisions, and we can't just make them as, as we just see what, or think what's, what's quick and fast. So appreciate everybody's effort on it. I think we've, we've got a, we've got a step now we can move forward, so.
Any other comments? I just agree with both commissioners. I think, you know, the quicker we can get our, our people, the police department into that facility, and we've been talking about it for quite a long time, but, you know, there is that collaborative effort between the police department and the sheriff's department, how it is now, and kind of like to see that continue. And it is true, if we can get them out of that, out of the LEC and into a separate place, and when the sales tax does pass, that'll just get that construction process done quicker, so they can get back into the LEC. Any other comments or questions? Entertain a motion on this item. Unless the chief has anything to say on this.
This is 12B, right?
12B, yes.
I'll make the motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city and the Garden City, Finney County.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed.
Item C, again, related. This governing body has asked to consider the First Amendment to the lease agreement for 1210 Fleming. At the May 6th, 2025 city commission meeting, the governing body approved the lease between Garden City and Duane Coster Trust and Kathy Coster Trust for the use of 1210 Fleming Street. This agreement included approximately 24,000 square feet. Since that time, the property owners have identified a design professional and construction company to work through the remodel of the space. In those discussions, preliminary drawings were completed to identify whether or not there would be sufficient space to move both entities into the space. However, with the additional 6,500 square feet that this amendment would allow for, both agencies are confident they would be able to co-locate at the facility. Again, the design and that's not complete, but there is sufficient square footage. The city and county have proposed a memorandum of understanding, which will be considered separately, and you, you've just approved that, to jointly share in the costs of both agencies on ongoing rent payments, but the capital cost of the remodel as well. The Board of County Commissioners will consider the MOU at their next meeting. The lease, though, is brought up by Commissioner Andrew on the last item, is exclusively with the city of Garden City. The city and county will be responsible for budgeting ongoing operational costs within their respective budgets, but the final ballot language in November and the outcome of that election will determine if the costs can be recovered with sales tax proceeds, or whether general fund as a whole will have to cover the costs. Our alternatives are that the governing body may approve the First Amendment to the lease agreement for 1210 Fleming Street, or the governing body may not approve the First Amendment to the lease agreement for 1210 Fleming Street, and provide staff with alternative direction. Our recommendation is to approve the lease. The fiscal note, this would increase by $22,833 a month, which equates to $274,000 annually. Increase to, not increase by, I'm sorry. Additionally, the city and county would be responsible for the cost of the remodel, so that does incrementally increase as well. Same sort of per-square-footage pricing, so the, the anticipated remodel is now between 4.2 million and 4.5 million. It is anticipated that the capital costs associated with the temporary police facility would utilize temporary notes, short-term bond financing, to complete the project, and would be split evenly between the city and county as outlined in the memorandum of understanding, and that the city commission will consider separately. And you already have done that and approved it. Additionally, the city commission will consider an interlocal agreement that would allow for the use of future sales tax proceeds should a ballot issue for the LEC and jail be approved by voters. You've also just approved that in the last 10 minutes. So, do you have any questions?
Any questions for Matt?
I think one just kind of popped up here when we were discussing this, Matt, is the fact that when Gary was up here talking about that the sheriff's office won't move in until October, is those square foot costs considered with the sheriff's office remodeling in there? Or is that just...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
As long as they're both in there, that's...
And I will, I will tell you, the even, I think the evenly language that's used in this memo is, again, that sort of bifurcated, trifurcated definition of even. We pay ours, they pay theirs, we split the, we split the shared.
Okay.
And that's how it's pretty much written in the agreement too. I mean, where it's, if you read the agreement.
Yeah, I did. And I sent Matt an email on the question about the buyout option too, and I wouldn't be opposed to just take that language out if, because at this point, it's, I mean, that's a lot of money for, to buy a building when we're going to be there for five years. But it's, it's a moot point of this. I don't know.
I think, I think right now, probably leave it in, just because...
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to take it out.
I would leave it in, just because it might be an option for us as we continue to move forward, depending on what happens in the future too. I mean, you never know.
A lot of things could happen from now until then, yeah.
Well, and you have to, just to clarify, you have two things. You have the ability to buy it, right?
Right.
If you choose to buy it anytime, but you also have a first right of refusal. So, because Costers could at some time decide that they no longer want to own this building or the property that you're in, and your landlord could be changing. And if they're going to sell it to someone else, you may want during that five years, the option to purchase it. So there are, we set this up so that you guys could make decisions not quickly, not, you know, in a rash fashion. You can kind of think through what you want to do, but you have them there, and you're in, they're in that contract, and we don't need to take them out in order to facilitate you not buying it if you choose not to do that. But it's good for, for protection in the future.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve the First Amendment of the lease agreement for 1210 Fleming Street.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
There's been a second. Any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed.
Continuing on the theme of intergovernmental cooperation, the governing body has asked to consider and approve an agreement between the city of Garden City and Finney County regarding the operation of the animal shelter. The Finney County Humane Society took over operations of the animal shelter in January of 2017. The city and county have maintained animal control duties, but the day-to-day care of the animals is managed by Humane Society staff. Since that time, the city and county have maintained a partnership with financial support of the Finney County Humane Society. This financial support is not only funding the Humane Society, but... This financial support is not only funding the humane society, but this financial support is not only funding the humane society on an annual basis, but it does represent a bulk of their annual revenues. The additional proceeds help support programs and services that go beyond the scope of city and county requirements. The proposed agreement would begin on January 1st, 2026 and includes the ability to renew annually unless either party gives 90 days notice to terminate and splits the annual cost between city at 65% and county at 35%. This would eliminate the city and county having to draft and consider a new agreement every few years. Alternatives are the governing body may approve the agreement between the city of Garden City and Finney County regarding the operational cost of the animal shelter. Number two, the governing body may not approve the agreement. Staff recommends approval and the, for the fiscal note, this will be included in the annual budget consideration for both the city and county. The animal shelter has requested an extension of their existing agreement with the city, which includes continuation of a 2% increase for 2026, which would be $318,362.40. If the city and county both authorize signature of this agreement, the city would be responsible for $206,935.56 in your 2026 budget. Happy to answer.
Any questions for Matt? Well, just so I'm clear, I, you know, I was going to ask before we were there and that was a really great tour. But so do, do both, does the city of Garden City have its own animal control officers? And then the county has its own animal control officers?
That's correct.
And then they work in tandem to?
I, I do think there's coordination similar to the police department and, and the sheriff's office and some communication. But, you know, dogs at large call in Garden City is going to be covered by a Garden City animal control officer. Similarly, that, that type of call out in the county would be dispatched to a county animal control officer. And chief can share anything in addition to that.
Well, no, I know, because I know the county area that they have to cover as an animal control officer has got to be huge.
Yeah.
I mean, with Finney County being, I don't know if it's the largest county in Kansas.
Pretty close.
Yeah. Just talking about the animal control officers, so, do, how many do you have?
So we have two.
Okay.
And the county has one.
Wow.
They try to help each other out as much as possible. I mean, if they need help with catching an animal or something like that, we'll absolutely help them out. They've helped us out, so it's kind of one of those partnership things that, that goes, so. Any other questions?
No, sorry, thank you. Any other questions for Matt? Entertain a motion on this item. I move that we approve the agreement between the city of Garden City and Finney County regarding the operational costs of the animal shelter. There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you. The governing body is asked to consider and approve a request to open an additional round of AFAC funding in 2025. Funding for AFAC Alcohol Fund Advisory Committee is established in KSA 79-41A04, which creates the Alcoholic Liquor Fund created from alcohol consumption tax funds. State law also prescribes how those monies are to be distributed back to local units of government. For cities with population greater than 6,000, the law sets forth that one-third money be credited to the general fund, one-third be credited to a special parks and recreation fund, and one-third to a special alcohol and drug program funded in the city's treasury. With few treatment and prevention facilities or agencies in Garden City, past awards have largely been made to agencies which have provided an expanded definition of prevention based on accepted categories of prevention strategies. This added flexibility aims to keep funds local. Earlier this year, the city commission awarded AFAC funds through the annual award process. The grant has two paths. First is 50,000 that is dedicated to agencies that request $6,000 or less. And the second of 50,000 that is for agencies that request more than $6,000. While both processes received more requests than funds available, there are still funds available in the special alcohol fund. As such, staff is recommending opening up an additional round of AFAC funds with funds being prioritized that meet one of the following current or previous city commission goals. So this, we looked, we looked back like two years, this year and the two previous years. So kind of fresh goals for the commission. Youth leadership engagement, support healthcare providers, co-responder program, and assist in the development of private childcare options. The proposals will still need to identify the connection between the program and prevention, intervention, education, or treatment. But the goal is that a concerted effort in these areas will help move these initiatives forward and provide some one-time funding opportunities to expand capacity. There is currently $393,000 available in this fund. In 2023, the city commission opened another round of funding in the amount of 250,000. In 2024, the city commission opened another round of funding in the amount of 75,000. Staff would recommend keeping at least $140,000 available in the fund balance to allow for the similar flexibility in future years. The evaluation criteria that was used in the first round has been attached. The city commission may direct to staff to make modifications to the evaluation criteria. If no modifications are noted, staff will utilize the attached criteria in the evaluation process. Alternatives, the governing body may authorize staff to release another round of AFAC funding in 2025 in an amount to be determined by the governing body and use the evaluation criteria as presented. The governing body may authorize staff to release another round of AFAC funding in 2025 in an amount to be determined by the governing body and modify the evaluation criteria. Or three, the governing body may not authorize staff to release a second round of AFAC grant funding in 2025. Staff's recommendation is that the staff, the governing body authorize staff to release another round in the amount determined by the city commission and provide direction on the evaluation criteria. There is no cost to release the application, but if proposals are submitted, there is currently $253,000 in available funds that would be used for these requests. Any questions? And that 253 that's in the fiscal note would be an assumption that you would adhere to the advice to leave 140. From, there is actually 393 available in the fund balance, but we're suggesting that you could award up to, to, any number up to 253 and still honor that. Questions?
I appreciate that, the evaluation criteria. I, I think there were really good questions. And the one thing I know we'd requested before with these, these grants is that there be some type of a matrix so that when people are funded or not funded, that we would actually be able to see how they either met the criteria or didn't meet the criteria. In the past couple of different ones, it's just been, they didn't get funded, or they did get funded, but we had no matrix or anything like that. In case, when people called and said, hey, hey, why didn't I? So I think, and I think that matrix, having them like know how well they answered the questions or made that, I think would be very valuable for those making grant applications. I'm all for releasing some dollars. The 253,000 seems like a lot for this year, but I mean, I would say 150,000 is something I would throw out there as a recommendation, so. Have we used this criteria before, the evaluation criteria before?
Yes, and if this doesn't, it would be the will, I mean, I hear what Commissioner Andrew is saying. If it's the will of the commission to change this into, if you don't believe this is a matrix and it needs to resemble a, a different format, or you want to identify what, you know, the scoring component to it, then I think some direction along those lines, I don't think you need to design that. But if you like, I like the questions. I don't like the, it's, it's criteria, it's not a form. I want you to come back and show us a form. We'll do that. If a majority of the governing body likes this, then that's fine, but we need to make sure we're following three voices and not one.
You know, I, I think, and I'm kind of in, kind of the same direction as Commissioner Andrew. I don't want to speak out of line, but, you know, in the past, we had, I mean, looked at the funding and it was like, well, we awarded them the funding. And it's like, well, but how did you get to that point? And there was no matrix or no explanation, even with this, they didn't really explain how they got to, why they funded at the amount they funded and who they funded. And, you know, as a, you kind of want to know because, yeah, you do get asked or called and, you know, why did you fund this organization? Or how did, how did that come about? And you don't really have a good explanation because there's nothing to really back that up. I mean, if, if the people that are applying, if we can answer all these, I like the questions. I like everything that kind of meets that definition of kind of our objectives. That I, you know, when I read through it, I thought it was fine. I think if those questions are answered, that would give us a better idea of, for me as a commissioner, going out and answering anybody's questions on how it got funded or why it got funded in the community. Any other comments or questions for Matt? And I didn't know if there's, I was kind of, they bring proposals to us and then you take the proposal and then match it up to the criteria? Or do they have an, is there an application process where they apply for this?
There's an application process.
Okay. And do we have, do we have an application?
Not in front of you.
Okay.
If the commission wishes to identify the amount and the desire to move forward, we can delay the start of that giving time for you to approve the evaluation criteria and, you know, a more elaborate, I guess, a matrix, a scoring rubric almost against these questions as well as a copy of the application at a subsequent meeting.
Yeah, I think that's great.
I think that would work.
I think for me, most importantly, it's just a scoring rubric-esque, something that where there's a point value assigned to how well it met that criteria. But I think the questions are great. I think only when we have more of an evaluation number and a local number, it offers us a bit more understanding of
Sure.
how well did whoever reviewed it looked at these applications.
And this comes to mind when we were talking about this, but would you want to see something like the downtown funds? Rubics or scoring, how, it kind of scores off of dollars. So that gives them a dollar amount what they qualify for.
I think that might be a little bit too hard for me because I think sometimes when it comes to those bigger projects, we're looking at X, Y, Z amount of numbers. But when we're coming to these grants, in the past, they range from what, 6,000 if not 25,000? And I, I would be more willing to fully fund a program than just to knock them off points for, or they didn't meet enough money, so they didn't get enough money, yeah.
Okay. I mean, I think a five-point scale, I don't think it has to be a 10-point scale, I mean, something, and I, and I could be, I mean, I know it's been, we've been, I've been on the commission for a while, but I, I think there was in the past, we've had these scoring rubics before. And so I think they're available that we've used and maybe is with downtown vision. But I've seen them before where they assign a point value. Hey, you answered this question, so you got a five, you know what I'm saying? I mean, is it going to impact people? Yes, okay. But I mean, I do think the value in that is that gives you a little bit more information. And I think the value also makes them make sure they read the, the evaluation questions. Hey, this is how your project's going to be evaluated and it's going to be assigned this point value for that.
And I think before getting into the weeds of the evaluation, as Commissioner Andrew said, you offered 150,000, what you said?
Yep. Any other?
Is this a, is this a use it or lose it fund or is it rollover?
Really good question. In our budget, it rolls over, so it carries over. Now, I would say that it is, and this is, this was our motivation back in 2023. I don't think it's in cities, plural, in Kansas, best interest to be holding large cash balances in these funds that are appropriated by the state. I think that, you know, there could be a, like, hey, if they're not going to use it, let's sweep it.
Yeah, there could be a clawback.
And, you know, if similar cities are in similar situations, it could turn into a real number, just with the cities of the first class, so.
So the 140, Matt, how did you determine that number? Was there, I mean, was there some, some reason you chose that number or?
There was a reason Danielle chose that number.
Okay, I didn't know what the reason was.
No, I think it's, I think there was an estimate of what could be sustainable to allow us to have a third round
Oh, okay.
every year or every other year if we wanted to.
Okay.
If the commission wanted to. We bring in, I mean, this is alcohol tax.
Right.
We, we kind of base AFAC on what we're going to do in the two grant processes. This 50 plus 50 on an annual amount of 100 coming in. We've been outperforming that as a community on alcohol tax. And so this cash balance is growing even though we're dispersing $100,000 out of it a year, so.
I'm comfortable with the amount of 225 to be, to get dispersed if we're on the same.
You gonna make a motion or?
Well.
I'd be, so I just want to say as well, I'd be as good with having a scoring criteria as well. I think having a scoring criteria would be very important. That way, give feedback of why certain programs got funded, didn't get, didn't get funded, et cetera. I'd be okay with between 150 to 200,000. I know our biggest we've ever given the past couple of years was 250, 250,000. If we go to 150, gets us down to 243 plus whatever next year, just to have that in case we decide to do. I know in 2023 had the big one of doing for childcare, so that way we'd have something to decide to do something that big again. So that's kind of my thought process on those.
Yeah, I think something a little bit less than 225. I would kind of offer a suggestion that at some point in our decision-making to maybe expand more than just that 50/50 for the small grants and large grants of the AFACs to even open it to maybe 150 or 200 later on. So we, so when we open our, if we have a chance to open a third round, it would be less than, more than the set amounts in the beginning.
And then you don't have to reapply. If you're not funded, you don't have to reapply. It gives people more option. I agree with that, that'd be good.
I'll give it a go. I'll make the motion to authorize staff to release another round of AFAC funding in 2025 in the amount of $200,000. And the use of the evaluation criteria as presented to be included as well as a matrix or scoring metrics.
There's been a motion. Is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
There's been a second. Any other discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
All right, thank you. Item 12F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the recommendation from the Traffic Advisory Committee to relocate an existing pedestrian crosswalk and add a second pedestrian crosswalk on Campus Drive east of Garden City Community College.
Mike, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Garden City Community College has requested that the existing pedestrian crosswalk on Campus Drive north of Spruce Street be relocated and an additional crosswalk installed further north on Campus Drive near Jean Avenue. The community college staff believes that the existing pedestrian crosswalk, if it was moved further south, closer to the dorms, would better utilize and be safer for the students crossing using crosswalks instead of just darting across the street. The proposed location of the additional pedestrian crosswalk is further north near Jean Avenue, and that will help increase pedestrian safety for students crossing out to different facilities they cross on the north side as well. Staff worked with the community college and the First Assembly of God Church to ensure that the church was okay with the relocation of the existing crossing. And the church did agree that would be a better location. And if approved, the Garden City Community College has agreed to pay all costs associated with the relocating of the existing crosswalk and installing the new crosswalk. We did take this to the Traffic Advisory Committee at their last month's meeting, met on June 11th, and they recommended proceeding with the college's request. So your alternatives is you may approve the Traffic Advisory Committee's recommendation or you may not approve the Traffic Advisory Committee's recommendation. And staff recommends you approve their recommendation. And under a fiscal note, there's no fiscal impact to the city because the college will be paying for all of the costs associated with this. I'm happy to answer your question because the math kind of shows.
Any questions or comments for Mike? So do you, do you think this will actually work? I mean, because most of the time at most of the crosswalks in our community, we have the crosswalks, but nobody uses them. And I mean, literally, I mean, we, we, except for one. I know there's one, it's at one of our churches that they, you know, they've actually got a person that walks out with the stop sign and everything, but it's.
Will they be flashing?
Yes.
Oh, okay, like, yeah, those are.
It's like they exist.
Yeah, those are.
They don't use it, is the thing.
We asked the college that question, they thought they would use it more and both the church and the college thought they would because right now they're crossing, but having. the church and the college thought they would because right now they're crossing one avenue.
Right, right.
Sometimes they'll use it. I agree with this, sometimes they don't.
So do you think, especially the one by the dorms, you think they'll use that one more so than, than it is being?
Yeah. They'll use the ones closer. If we move the one to the south, that'll be better utilized. And the north one is, a lot of people cross up there to get over to the Dollar General store or walk over to the other businesses on the other side.
Great. I definitely would love for the college to advocate for their students to use it. I think it, it helps out traffic a lot instead of having to have people slow down and cause a little traffic snake at a random time of day or when practice is happening. I would definitely love for the college to ensure that their students are using those crosswalks because I think it's much more safer for those driving too.
Any other questions or comments for Mike? Entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make the motion to approve the traffic advisory committee's recommendation to relocate the existing pedestrian crosswalk on Campus Drive further south and install additional pedestrian crosswalk near Gene Avenue along Campus Drive.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Item 12G, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a reappointment and appointment to the local housing authority. Is Kimberly here? If not, I'll read it. The governing, yeah, the governing body's asked to consider and approve a reappointment and appointment to the local housing authority. And the local housing authority is a local agency responsible for administering affordable housing programs and initiatives within the community. Its mission is to ensure access to safe, decent, and sanitary housing for eligible low-income individuals and families. The local housing authority is governed by a five-member board. Four members are appointed by this governing body, while one member is appointed by the housing authority director and must be a resident of either Pershing Manor or Redwood Apartments. Currently, there are four active members serving on the board with one vacancy on the board. Ashley Lee was originally appointed in January of 2021 to a three-year term, which concluded in December 2023. Ms. Lee has continued to serve and remain actively engaged with the board. To address the oversight and not reappointing her in January 2024, the housing authority respectfully requests the governing body retroactively reappoint Ms. Lee to a new three-year term ending in December 2026. This action will ensure that all board members are current and that their terms remain appropriately staggered. Kayla Kinnear, a resident of Garden City, has expressed interest in filling the vacant position. While standard board terms are three years in length and begin in January, staff recommends a modified term due to the mid-year timing of this appointment. It is recommended that Ms. Kinnear be appointed to a three-and-a-half-year term beginning July 1, 2025 and ending December 31, 2028. This adjustment aligns future reappointments with a regular term schedule, and that term schedule and the board members are shown below in the memo. Your alternatives, you may reappoint as requested, you may not reappoint as requested and offer other choices. Staff recommends the plan to retroactively appoint Ashley Lee to a second three-year term from January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2026, and appoint Kayla Kinnear to a three-and-a-half-year term beginning July 1, 2025 through December 31, 2028 on the local housing authority board. And if you agree, you could say so moved and not have to read all that.
Entertain a motion on, on this item.
I'll make a.
Or say so moved.
I guess, I'll make the motion to retroactively reappoint Ashley Lee to her second three-year term from January 1, 2024 through December 31, 26, and appoint Kayla Kinnear to a three-year and a half term beginning July 1, 25 through December 31, 28 on the local housing authority board.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. I do have a question, Matt, on who has the, who is the state authority over the local housing authority? Is it?
So they're a component unit of the city of Garden City, much like the rec, well, exactly like the Recreation Commission once was before it blended with the city of Garden City. So a component unit uses the taxing boundaries of, of our entity. If they're a component unit of the city, they're, they use our taxing boundaries. You also have the kind of a governance power in that you appoint four of their members. But really, they're their own board, they're, they're, they're their own corporation and have their own operations, and they're responsible to, just, you know, as we are to abide by state law, they are required to abide by state federal laws, and they have an independent audit. They do have to show us that audit annually, but they operate as an independent unit of government.
Because it would seem like we, you mean, we'd have, we really have a need for this type of, additional, this type of housing. So who, how do we, how would, how do we, do we as a city apply for this type? Or is it the local housing authority?
This is HUD, this is federal HUD programming, and that's, that's more complex than I have the ability to answer.
Yeah, as far as, I mean, I'm just interested if we could have additional, because I know those are usually filled and we have people on waiting lists for years, and I didn't know if there's a way to.
Yeah, a few decades ago, subsidized housing moved a lot more towards private developments and providing them development incentives to build that, and they would have to report for a period of time the income of their residents and, as opposed to government-owned housing, which these units would be. So I'm not saying that you, there isn't an avenue, I just don't know well enough if you can build new HUD housing or if most now comes in the form of tax credits and development incentives like moderate income housing. We've done a lot of those applications. I think you just approved a tax credit application for another developer. I think that's the, in the last 20 or 30 years, the more common tool for income-based housing.
No, thank you. All right. Moving on to 12H.
12H, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a draft of the 2026 city budget so that the indication of revenue-neutral rate intent can be authorized to be signed by the mayor.
Good afternoon.
You've got three minutes.
Yeah. As I read through this, when we get to the kind of the bullet points, the potential levers, I'll pause after each one to make sure you have an opportunity to ask any questions as far as kind of the explanation of kind of what exactly that means or making sure you're all, you're all clear on kind of the dynamics of each, each option. So, at the June 3 city commission meeting, the staff completed the presentation of the 2026 city manager's proposed budget. From this point, the city commission begins its deliberation of the budget. The city received the estimated valuation from the county clerk, and the assessed valuation used for the budget preparation for the city is $318,965,988. This is an increase of approximately 8.18% over 2024. The revenue-neutral rate identified by the county is 35.928 mils. Accounting for the valuation from the county, the budget, as it has present, been presented to the commission, would require a mil levy of 41.107 or an increase of 2.624 mils over our current rate. To achieve a flat mil levy rate of 38.483, the budget would need to be adjusted by an additional $836,796. A one-mil reduction would require an adjustment of $1,155,762. And to achieve the revenue-neutral rate of 35.928, the budget would need to be adjusted by $1,651,925. Appropriate next steps would be to identify projects, programs, or line items about which you, as individual commissioners, have questions for staff or for which you have recommended amendment, amendments for the commission's consideration. As the commission considers individually and collectively the type of budget it wants for 2026, staff encourages you to articulate what you are weighing. For instance, are specific programs or line item expenses, whether cuts or adds, of significant importance to you? Is a certain property tax dollar amount or mil levy increase, decrease, or no change of significant importance to you? Of all the things you deem of significant importance, which is most important? The tough question for the commission is identifying ways to get there. This direction from the commission enables staff to prepare the final budget so that it may accomplish the goals and focus of the commission. In that regard, staff has identified some of the major discussion points on expenses, revenues, and unbudgeted considerations for the commission to consider in its evaluation. The following assumptions are incorporated into the budget as presented and would be available to be adjusted at the commission's discretion. As in past years, we will use the colors green, yellow, and red as the staff's indication of the level of risk associated with adopting each of the following budget consumptions. Green indicates a staff-recommended option, yellow indicates caution, and red indicates ill-advised. Number one, in all funds with personnel. Yep.
Let's just stop for one quick minute. Let's ask the commission first. Let's go back to that first paragraph before we kind of go through all of this. So my, my thought process is let's ask the commission and see, do we want to raise the mil levy? Because that would make it easy for us if we just said, hey, we'll raise the mil levy by 2.62 mils, and we don't have to go through and try to figure out how to cut anything. If, if, if we want to keep it flat as a commission, then that starts the hard process. Or if we want to get to the revenue-neutral rate, that really makes it agonizingly painful for everyone.
Yeah, I'll add the.
So I guess.
The point of today's item, the, the two pieces you really have to decide on are one, that rate that you want to put on the publication the county submits, and if you want to intend to exceed the revenue-neutral rate. All the other feedback for the items is discretionary, giving us some direction to come back to the, kind of the next meeting with the plan. But really, the, the point of, Mayor's point there is, is the intent of this item today is to decide what is that target mil levy you want to publish and is it above that revenue-neutral rate?
So if that's okay, if you just kind of, and before we try to go through, we can, then, once we figure that out, then we can go through all the items. But I was thinking, let's have that discussion first. And then if it's, if we, yeah, if we want to raise it, then we're done. If we want to keep it flat like we've done for the last decade, over decade, or want to reduce it, then that's when we have the real discussion.
Perfect.
No, I think that's great.
I'll save my breath. I'm fine with that. I'm not throwing my water now.
Take, take that, take that drink.
Yep.
I know the, I know the last 10, I mean, over the last decade, and I know the auditors have said over the last, I think, 15 years, we've kept the, the mil levy flat as a commission. I know that's kind of been our goal. I don't know if it needs to be a goal, but that's kind of how it's been for the last 15 years. Over the last decade, the community has grown substantially through retail industry. We've expanded the airport to make it a regional hub, I mean, with a brand-new terminal. So we've been adding staff. We've been adding, I'm just throwing things out there, we've been adding and enhancing the community as the footprint gets bigger, as housing gets more, there just, there's more cost associated with it. And the interesting thing is, as the community's grown over the last 10 years, we've kept the mil levy flat, and the staff and the finance department and the city manager have done an outstanding job of keeping the budget within range as we've kept it flat for all of that time. So that being said, and I mean, just like today, we just opened a brand-new fire station, and we're adding staff, we're adding apparatus to that. So as the community continues to grow out to the east side with not only housing but industry as well and additional retail. So enough said from my standpoint. I mean, I've always, I've always advocated, and even when we had people in the last two meetings ago, when, the last meeting, I don't remember, the one, they were talking about the star bond and, and property tax, you know, it's like, we can, we can sit up here and say, well, we haven't raised your taxes. We haven't raised them for the last 10 years, which we haven't. I mean, it's through evaluations, and there's other, three, three other taxing entities in the community as well that, you know, you have to look at, so.
Jared, I hate to do this to you, but would you be able to kind of give us a short estimate of how much an increase from one mil and one and a half would be? So if you look at that valuation, kind of the easy, the easy way to do it is the, that total number, 318 million, if you knock off the, the thousand decimal, each mil is approaching, approximately going to be 318,000, 319,000 worth of value. And so if you are trying to do the quick math, if you increased a mil from the $836,000, that would be flat, you just decreased 318,000 from that, 319,000, and you'd, you'd kind of have that target 510, 515. If you go down another mil, you knock up another 319, 320,000, now you're down to 200. So that's kind of the, the high-level way to kind of value that, what, what those one-mil increases would be.
So the $836,796 is actually 2.624 mils then?
Correct.
Yep. Any questions for Jared? Or I guess questions or kind of trying to get a consensus on what the commission would like to do before we, do we want to raise it? Do we want to keep it flat or do we want to lower it?
I'm, I'm weighing in more on keeping it flat or even lowering it. That's where my.
Okay. Well, and the thing I think about the evaluations, so, I mean, and I know the figures change based upon, and in Fannie County, we experience, I mean, it's a blessing because we have a, our, our properties, I mean, always increase in value. And I'm not saying that's always going to happen because there was times in the 80s when it didn't. But I think, you know, so that's why we have been able to, because our property values are holding or even going up. And so I think that's how we've been able to hold it flat. I mean, I, you know, I, a lot of people that, I mean, even if it's, even though we're only one of five taxing entities, the city is usually the one that they say, well, you've raised my taxes. Now, they, I don't, they might say it to all the others, but I mean, I, and they never mention anyone else when it comes to property, property tax or, or mil levy. They always mention to me, it's, it's the city's, you know, issue. And so, I mean, I know that there are so many other things. Our sales tax, I was thinking that, I was, I appreciate all the work that Jared went through. I thought the sales tax was growing bigger than the one or one and a half percent, you know, especially with all of that growing on. And I do know that as additional housing comes on, and like you said, additional industry, that that will hopefully stabilize some of those things. So I definitely, I don't, I don't think we can lower it. I mean, I'm, I would be with flat, you know, just to make sure that we can, as you said, that we have some dollars left for several years through the sales tax initiative for the new fire department for us to start figuring out that. But I would, I would rather see us stay flat than lower. I don't, I would rather it's not raised just because there's lots of other things nationally that if something doesn't happen, that, you know, we could all experience a significant tax increase. So, and the state, I thought they were going to offer a big tax decrease, and I don't, I don't see them doing, I've not seen anything from the state. So there's been no property tax relief from the state. And honestly, I don't think we can expect it. I do think we can expect as a city that we need to be responsible with the dollars that we're doing. You know, the state, whether they are or not, I don't know, but we need to be making sure of that.
So I'd like to see either a flat or if not a decrease in the mil levy rate.
Okay.
For me at least, I, I would like to see, I think, I think it makes staff, the, the functions of staff is a lot easier and more productive if we can at least, I think, to raise the mil, I would say one to one and a half for me.
And I've been on the commission long enough, I like to keep it flat, just, it's been tradition, I guess, but I know it's, like Commissioner Enry said, valuations keep going up. I mean, you get the, you get the tax bill in the mail and it's, or you get the valuation in the mail and you get the tax statement in the mail, and it's like, it just keeps going up every year exponentially. My concern is for people on fixed incomes and, you know, raising, you know, there are a lot of people on fixed incomes or, you know, people working two and three jobs. I just, I mean, I, I mean, I believe in the economy. I, I think we have a great economy and I really do, and I know those people who, you know, you, you just delay purchases or else you purchase less, and I know that they're doing everything they can. But again, I want to make sure that this is an affordable place to live, especially for property owners. And unfortunately, you know, mil levy and property tax really, they lead into whether or not you're going to own a home or not. I mean, it's part of the whole component when you're thinking about taking it alone. And property tax is one of those decisions that you have to, you have to make. So that's why I said the flat is what I was. Sounds like there's a consensus to keep it flat from, there's four commissioners that are saying flat or reduce, one commissioner that's looking at wanting to increase, so we can come to a consensus to at least keep it flat. Great. Okay. Yes, now, now we can move on.
Okay.
Now it's the how.
Now it's the how.
Right.
Now it's the $836,796 how.
All right, number one, in all funds with personnel, the salary line items reflect a 3% salary pool. In conjunction with recommendation provided by McGrath Human Resources Consulting Group and adopted by the commission on October 2023, 2% of the increase and adopted by the commission on October 2023, 2% of the increase is related to a pay plan adjustment on January 1st, 2026, to adjust for increases to the cost of living and to maintain competitiveness in our plan. The city has utilized a 3% January 1st adjustment in both 2024 and 2025, but prepared for the preliminary budget utilizing a 2% adjustment. The Midwest CPI through May 25th is approximately 2.4%. The CPI for '23 and '24 ended at or above 3%. The other 1% of the increase is related to the annual step increase that coincides with each employee's annual performance evaluation occurring on the employee's anniversary date. This step increase represents an approximate 2% increase at the time of occurrence. A 1% decrease to the 2026 salary pool would represent a cost savings of approximately $275,300 between the general and airport funds. Red, based on the analysis of the pay plan in 2023 by McGrath, annual adjustments to the pay plan should align with the Midwest CPI and other inflation indicators. Removing or reducing the salary pool would likely take the pay plan out of sync with the market. However, understanding the significant cost associated with this adjustment, staff felt it appropriate to identify the potential impact of an adjustment. Included in the 2025 revised budget are costs for an update to the pay plan analysis done by an independent third party, which will help to identify if the adjustments made over the last three years have enabled the plan to remain competitive in the market. So in a nutshell, the last two years, it was 3%, January 1st, this year, we went with the 2%, kind of watching the trend of the market.
And I did ask Matt as far as, and I know he didn't have time just with, when I asked a question, concerning whether or not our retention and recruitment were steady, are we morally fully staffed? And I really would like to see Human Resources really create some type of, I mean, if this is really working, or if it's not enough. Because again, I mean, I don't want us to get behind, but I also want to make sure that the things that we're doing with money, that there are the things that are making the difference and making the city one of the preferred employers. So, I mean, I'm not, I don't want to decrease this, but I would like more information on this, just to show that these dollars, which are, I think are very valuable, if it's really, you know, making people and recruiting people for the positions here. And I know that we didn't, there was enough time in between this meeting and this, and this presentation, but I would really appreciate some type of a presentation or a report on if it's working. Not with a, not with an analysis, just from our, I don't need a professional, just us saying, I don't really, yeah.
Number two, the employer's budgeted contribution to health insurance per authorized position is $10,560 per year in 2025 and $10,800 per year in 2026. A removal of the increase in 2026 for the 321 budgeted positions in the general fund and airport fund would yield approximately $77,040 in budget savings. Red, reflecting the desire to keep this benefit competitive with similar employers by proportionately sharing the increase in premiums between the employee and employer, a reduction in the employer's share would correlate with an increased cost on the employee's share of this benefit. Number three, Downtown Vision's 2026 request of $134,000 is level with the 2025 funding. Red, Downtown Vision is primarily funded by the City of Garden City. They have historically been highly valued contributors to development, quality of life, cultural efforts, event planning, and preservation efforts. They have not submitted a budget increase, and it would not be advised to take funding below 2025 levels if the city commission desires the same level of service. Number four, Finney County Economic Development's 2026 request of $305,000 is level with the 2025 funding. Red, the City of Garden City is the largest contributor to Finney County Economic Development Corporation and a significant partner in the efforts to expand residential, commercial, and industrial development and redevelopment. They have not submitted a budget increase, and it would not be advised to take funding below 2025 levels if the city commission desires the same level of service. Number five, the municipal band's 2025 request of $23,000 is level with the 2024 funding. The band anticipates a request for level funding in 2026 as well, and the budget for 2026 has been prepared anticipating a level request. Red, the city is the sole contributor to the costs of the municipal band. The band has not submitted a budget increase, and a budget reduction would impact the service levels provided by the band. Number six, Finney County Transit's 2026 request of $308,173 is a decrease of $27,161, or 8.1% below the 2025 request. Red, this budget request is in accordance with the agreement between the city and FCCA to provide and operate four fixed routes in the Garden City. The city's obligation is to pay 20% of equipment acquisition costs and 30% of the annual operating expenses budgeted by FCCA. If the city decided to terminate the agreement, notice would need to be provided to FCCA 180 days before the termination of the agreement on December 31st, 2025. Therefore, notice would need to be provided by July 4th, 2025.
Hey, I know in the past, sorry to interrupt, I know in the past, we used to get like quarterly reports on ridership on this, is there a way we could get that again?
We had a pre-meeting, and that may be the meeting you were at, we had a pre-meeting on transportation where they came to us, and they gave us ridership update. We have asked for them to provide us on either a monthly or quarterly basis, that monthly report that I think you're referring to, and they agreed to do that. I think it was, I think it was quarterly, maybe, when we'll see that.
Okay, thank you.
Number seven, the following new positions are included in the draft budgets as presented for the revised '25 and original '2026 budgets. In the zoo, we've added a zookeeper, two zookeepers. Yellow, not adding this position would reduce expenses by approximately $64,400 in the '26 budget, and that value is same for each keeper. The education specialist, this position was staffed previously, but the position was transitioned to an additional maintenance technician in 2025. Yellow, not adding this position would reduce expenses by approximately $65,200 in the 2026 budget. In traffic, there's a proposal to add a signals and traffic technician. Yellow, not adding this position would reduce expenses by approximately $70,325 in the 2026 budget. And in the airport, it's proposed for a security technician. This position is included in the budget as proposed to be shifted from part-time to full-time in August of 2025. Yellow, not transitioning this position would reduce expense by approximately $35,750 across 2025 and 2026. The budget as presented does not include this increase. Number eight, the December 31st, 2025, general fund cash carryover to 2026 is at $3,700,000. This is an increase of $100,000 over 2024. Yellow, the city's financial management policy recommends annually growing the general fund's budgeted cash balance. Staff encourages the city commission to comply with this practice. If it were considered for budget savings, staff would advise a $25,000 or $50,000 reduction instead of the full $100,000. Number nine, the budget currently incorporates utilizing the projected excess revenues from the .15 sales tax in 2025 and 2026 to fund the capital improvement plan fund. $200,000 is budgeted to be transferred in 2025 and $400,000 in 2026. Discussion from the June 3rd, 2025, and June 17th, 2025, pre-meetings provided information on the impact of removing this budgeted transfer. Yellow, if the city commission elected to delay the capital improvement projects utilizing the excess .15 sales tax reductions to go towards mill levy stabilization as a transfer to the general fund instead of the capital improvement projects fund, could result in up to $600,000 in savings. Staff would suggest that if this course of action were utilized, the commission look at a reduction of the amount going to CIP rather than completely eliminating the funding for '25 or '26, thus allowing progress towards the identified projects to continue. And I'll speak a little more on the CIP plans at the end. Number 10, additional funding of $500,000 has been budgeted in the general fund for street rehabilitation projects identified by PEC. Yellow, the increase in budget is to work towards accomplishing the street improvements identified in the study completed by PEC. A reduction to this budgeted amount would diminish the amount of improvement to be made in 2026 and prolong the amount of time it would take to accomplish the identified street improvements. Staff would suggest that if this course of action were utilized, the commission look at a reduction of the amount allocated for the street rehabilitation projects rather than completely removing the budgeted amount. The eight-year improvement plan proposed by PEC would have required between $2 million and $2.5 million each year to be accomplished, so the $500,000 budgeted is already diminished amount towards the project. Number 11, the transfer from the general fund to the recreation reserve of $50,000 to build up for future capital projects or interruption of revenues can be reduced or eliminated for 2026. Yellow, this transfer is in place to build up reserves to provide stability in the event of interruptions of revenue or services similar to what was experienced during COVID-19. Elimination or reduction of this transfer would reduce the available funds should such an event be experienced. Number 12, the city allocated $200,000 for downtown development grants in the 2024 budget. Thus far, $163,450 and 84 cents of those funds have been expended to eligible grant recipients in '25, leaving $36,549.16 in remaining funds. Yellow, applications continue to be submitted for the downtown development funds and are regularly being reviewed by staff. It is anticipated that the remaining funds will be expensed by the end of 2025.
Do we know on that, if we have any current applications going through the process that haven't gone to us yet?
I believe there's none that are in review, but I believe there's conversations that have been going on about applications, but I don't think the staff is sitting on any currently in the process.
Thank you.
Number 13, the city allocated $50,000 in the 2025 revised budget for the cost of reviewing and updating the city's current pay plan. Yellow, work is being done by the same consultant at a similar facility in the area, and costs will be reduced to complete a review when the consultant is already in the area reviewing comparable entities. Number 14, the city has allocated $325,000 in the budget as a holding place in the event the review of the pay study identifies necessary changes the commission wishes to adopt. Yellow, it is unknown at this time what the feedback from the consultant will be, but removing the placeholder entirely would make it difficult for the commission to implement any recommendations of the review of the pay plan in the current budget. And this is similar to what we did in 2023, where we kept kind of a botch of money, so that there were options provided commission of when to adopt an adjustment to the pay plan. Number 15, included in the communications budget is $60,000 for the remodel of a current storage room in the basement of the city administrative center to allow for office space and a studio for the communications staff. Green, with discussion and planning still ongoing regarding the possible relocation of emergency communications and the basement of the city administrative center identified as one potential option, it may not be prudent to move forward with a remodel for the communications team at this time. Number 16, the city conducted an employee survey through DecisionWise in 2024. Included in the budget is the cost of completing additional employee surveys in 2025 and 2026. The cost of these surveys is approximately $20,000 each year. Green, obtaining and navigating employee feedback is one of the performance metrics currently being pursued. If the survey is removed, staff will continue to utilize other options to obtain staff input. And number 17, the commission could elect to reduce the taxing funds budgeted by a designated dollar amount. Staff would then work to reduce applicable budgets through either a detailed review of each GL and a specific reductions of particular GLs, or through a generalized and proportionate reduction of all GLs to achieve the desired result. Similar to last year, before it was brought for the commission, the general fund departments worked through reducing their budgets to find and identify items that could be either removed or postponed. So last year, there was about $2 million to $3 million in general fund items that were kind of pushed out, and so some of those have been included in the 2026 budget for equipment and vehicles and things of that nature. Those could again be reviewed by staff and evaluated whether they can be pushed out further. Before I move on to the revenues, any questions or additional follow-up on any of the expense items?
Yeah, I wish the greens were higher dollar amounts, those aren't very big. So as far as this $325,000, so I remember we were on the commission, and the study came back, and we needed to make an intermediate increase, I mean, in the salaries, just even bring us close before the 3%. But, you know, I mean, we've stayed stable, and we've not deviated from that study, you know, at all, and we've continued to pay out what they recommended. So, I mean, my only, my only thing is with this $325,000, I mean, that to me would be an opportunity based upon that $50,000, but again, if we have the information from HR, that might give us a good idea, a better idea, whether that could be something that you could look at. I'm not saying, I just want to, so that while we're here, before we look at other things, I do think that if the city is doing well, and we're actually at market value or above, which is what I hope, then that might be a place that we could do that.
And from the 2023 results of doing something similar, there were kind of two dynamics of what the feedback provided indicated why we had fallen out of pace. One was that January 1 adjustment for the cost of living, but the other piece is just the comparables to other entities and what they had accelerated their plans, especially after COVID and whatnot. There was quite an aggressive push for pay across a lot of different entities, and so trying to find market value or kind of a comparable market normal was what that plan was partially looking into, as well as, did we stay with CPI? Did we stay with the adjustments for inflation?
Has that changed at all, Jared, or?
The recommendation of the January 1 increase staying closer to CPI index, we have done that. With the 3% in '24 and 3% in '25, I would anticipate that our scale has stayed closer to the CPI adjustments that are necessary, but the evaluation being done by the consultant will provide the feedback on, but still, are we comparable to market on the other side of that? Just because CPI went up doesn't mean individual entities didn't get more aggressive on their pay and kind of move the market up on that. And so that's what, through COVID and the after effects of COVID, we saw more of that side than we did even the inflation. And inflation actually has come kind of after the COVID piece, that that's been a little bit higher. And so I do think we've probably stayed closer to scale of what their recommendation would have been compared to what it was pre-2023 when we made that adjustment, but until we have their feedback, I really don't know what to tell the commission as far as, are we comparable to market? That's why that placeholder is being held, so that if the review said, you did, you know, you've done well, but market has moved even more aggressively than we would have anticipated, and you're slightly behind, you have those dollars available at your discretion to then say, okay, that would facilitate a January 1, '26 adjustment, or a January 1, 2027, do we want to postpone that? You would still have that at your discretion to how to pull that trigger, but these dollars leave that options available to the commission.
Any other questions? Let's just finish up the memo, and then we'll go back, circle back around, and then kind of try to discuss each, kind of from the commissioner's standpoint of kind of what they've come up with.
Perfect.
And their thoughts. Thanks, Jared.
The city's typical practice is to conservatively underestimate revenues and overestimate expenses. This has allowed the buildup of cash balance, enabling the commission to maintain a reasonably stable mill levy rate over the past 10 years. If the commission desired, they could adjust general fund revenues to budget more closely to the pace of collections of 2025 through June, rather than continue to underestimate those revenues as conservatively. Number one, city sales tax revenues for 2025 are 1.55% above June 2024 collections. Increasing the 2025 projected revenues to target half of the increase experienced year to date would result in revenues budgeted at $8,482,550, or $32,550 increase in revenues in 2025. Red, sales tax collections can be volatile and are hard to accurately anticipate. The city has maintained the practice of conservatively estimating these revenues to mitigate the volatility of the revenue source negatively impacting the budget and to help build the fund's cash balance year over year. Number two, county sales tax revenues for 2025 are up 1.23% above June 2024 collections. Increasing the 2025 projected revenues to target a half of the increase experienced year to date would result in revenues budgeted at $5,195,000, or $45,000 additional revenue in 2025. And red for the same reason as explained above. Number three, use tax revenues for 2025 are up 6.16% above June 2024 collections. Increasing the 2025 projected revenues to target one-half of the increase experienced year to date would result in revenues budgeted at $2,173,000, or $98,000 additional revenues in 2025, and this is also red. But of the three, the use tax is the one that is performing greater than last year. It is probably the most volatile of all the taxes that we receive, though. At this time, a decision must be made regarding the city's intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate. The deadline to submit an indication to the county regarding the revenue neutral rate is July 20th, 2025. The city's requirement is to indicate whether or not the city intends to exceed the revenue neutral rate. The city is also asked to include an anticipated mill levy rate, which will be included in the publication sent to residents by the county. The final mill levy adopted by the city and published for the budget hearing can differ from the mill levy rate included in the publication. However, the city aims to estimate the anticipated mill levy rate accurately. And the alternatives today are to allow, authorize the mayor to sign the indication of revenue neutral rate intent stating the city intends to exceed the revenue neutral rate and identify a mill levy rate to be included on the publication sent to citizens. Number two, postpone the action regarding the revenue neutral rate to the meeting on July 15th, 2025, and make a decision at that meeting to comply with the July 20th, 2025 deadline. Or three, to authorize the mayor to sign the indication of revenue neutral rate intent stating that the city does not intend to exceed the revenue neutral rate, and indicate the revenue neutral rate or some other rate lower than the revenue neutral rate to be included on the publication sent to citizens. And staff recommends alternative one. The other items included in your packet today, there's a draft of what the revenue neutral rate indication form looks like, and so upon your decision today of what rate to indicate, or if you postpone in the next meeting, once that's adopted, that will be presented to the county and included on the publication that goes out to all citizens. There's an updated breakout of the kind of the cash flow for all the budget, and then there's two options for the CIP- And then there's two options for the CIP plan, based off of the feedback provided by the KIP mission from the pre-meetings. There's scenario CIP option one and CIP option two. Both of these plans incorporate leaving the airport parking lot as a project to be budgeted and paid for out of the CIP fund, rather than be levy, included in the general obligation bond. Upon review with Director Powell, we looked at the dollars, anticipated dollars remaining from the terminal project and anticipate that there will be dollars available that we could put towards the project for the airport expansion as well. And so until the terminal project wraps up and kind of finishes all the final steps and we know what that dollar is, we can leave it out of a bond. And then next year, we would anticipate we would have a pretty solid understanding of what dollars are available for that project. And if then there is a shortfall, the commission could decide to then bond the shortfall or keep it in the plan as presented. And when the dollars are then available to finish, use those project dollars and the CIP fund dollars to finish it up. And so these are in order as they were rated. The only difference is CIP option one, the twenty-twenty-five revenue is two hundred thousand dollars and the twenty-twenty-six revenue is four hundred thousand dollars, which would be just the point one-five sales tax that is identified in the budget to be transferred over to that fund. Whereas scenario two includes the one-time RHID revenues that were discussed at the pre-meeting. If it were to be included in the CIP option two, you could accelerate the pace at which you accomplish those projects. Also available for discussion or at your discretion would be if you utilize those RHID dollars, you could then supplement some of those point one-five dollars to accomplish the mitigation of the budget issue in the general fund and keep the funding coming into the CIP either at the two-hundred and four-hundred level, or, you know, anything kind of between the mix there. And then the final document are just kind of a layout of some of the large price tag, either projects or adjustments that have been made in the past years or coming in the future, such as that PEC road repair plan, the airport operational costs, the pool debt service and operational costs, the third fire station operational costs, that one is covered by the point one, point three-zero sales tax through twenty-thirty-three, but then we anticipate approximately two and a half million dollars a year in operational costs that will be just part of the general fund as a cost the city has to accommodate as well, when that tax is no longer in place. So that's just kind of a laid out to try to help paint the picture a little bit for kind of what's coming and maybe some of those large ticket items of your budget that have brought us to where we are today.
Any questions for Jared? Do we want to start on, we'll start back at, I guess we'll go back to one, kind of start and then kind of move through. Do we want to just stay off the reds, go to yellows and greens, or do we want to look at everything?
I would personally want to start from greens to yellows. I think green.
Green makes it pretty easy. So fifteen and sixteen is the communication budget for the remodel and then the twenty thousand for the survey.
And it would be twenty thousand each year, so it'd be forty thousand.
Okay.
I mean, I think the thing about seventeen, this is where you just go back to the departments and make sure that they are, you know, just reevaluating, making sure. So I think, I mean, I think that's always something prudent. I mean, I'm not saying it's off the table, but I do think it's something, if we need them to do that, then I think that's also an opportunity, you know. And there were dollars that came up, like the, oh, I can't remember, the mobile command station. So there are dollars that came up to a grant. So I do think it would be something that they could look at and say, hey, could we do without that for a period of time? I'm not saying it's always that way. I want to say at the outset, I mean, we've spent a lot of money with the fire department and the police department, and so like the road, the roads and streets, I think, I don't want to cut anything there. I mean, I think we've put that off many, many times. So that's one thing I want to make sure that we kind of keep, because it's not going to go away and it's going to continue. I don't want it to end up like Topeka, so.
Okay.
I think it makes sense for us with the intent that we have, that those green items, we can withhold for those green items.
And on fifteen, sixty thousand is just that, the sixty, it's not like the fifteen?
Correct. So sixty thousand for fifteen and then forty thousand for sixteen. Commissioner Andrew talked about seventeen is where the commission would elect to reduce the taxing funds and just have staff go back and try to reduce that amount, whatever we came up with, and try to figure out that remaining balance.
Probably going to be the balancing number off of what you picked.
Right, yeah. Let's write that too, so, yeah. Because we're kind of working our way backwards, let's just go to fourteen then. Do we want to look at making a change on fourteen, on the allocation of the three hundred and twenty-five thousand?
I understand why we have that in place. I'm just hoping we don't have to use it. I mean, I don't know if we assume we won't have to use it. I mean, I think Jared's been very prudent. I mean, he talked about the revenues, we've been very conservative. So I do think this is a lever that you can say, hey, we might need this, or, I mean, I'm hoping we don't, especially after the fifty thousand dollars that's spent right above it, which I think is good money spent. But as far as the three hundred and twenty-five thousand, boy, if we're that far off, then, I mean, that would be hard.
Well, the three hundred and twenty-five thousand is if the pay plan is surveyed and it's not sufficient for market value. So then the three twenty-five goes, would go to help employees have a wage that's competitive.
Well, I think recruitment and retention, those numbers, knowing those, that would tell us that, you know, if it's competitive. And so that's the thing I think is really hard, not knowing that information, so.
Yeah, so like if it's not competitive, then I think that three twenty-five, the idea of that would be used to supplement.
Right, but we did that several years ago, and I mean, we spent a huge chunk of money on doing that. And I mean, if we had to do that again, then we've, we're spinning our wheels. We spent a lot of money for a study, I don't know how much that study was before. So this to me, I want everyone to have a competitive wage, but I'm just hoping that this, that three hundred and twenty-five thousand, even though I think it, it's prudent to put it in there and say, hey, this is available just in case, but I just can't, I don't anticipate us needing that in the sense that hopefully we've stayed up with that. So, I mean, I do think it could be a number that, you know, you look at once we kind of see, but.
So just from my understanding, is three hundred and twenty-five thousand the budgeted for going towards a consultant, or is that going towards the wages to balance, those to be competitive?
That's what I understood. It's just, it's a holding number just to offset any, anything that we have to increase on.
Yeah, number thirteen, the fifty thousand is budgeted for paying a consultant to review the plan. And then the three hundred and twenty-five is to roll out a change to our pay scale if required or if recommended and adopted by the commission to the pay plan.
Okay. And kind of relative to the general fund and the airport fund too, it's not department, it's not citywide, those are, that's the portion that would be towards the taxing funds, taxing funds roughly twenty-seven, twenty-eight million dollars in payroll. So if it was viewed to be off by like one and a half percent, that's the three twenty-five.
That's where you get it.
So I don't think, you know, three hundred and twenty-five is a big number. It's not a big number relative to twenty-eight million. So if it comes back and says you're off by three percent or four percent, I don't know that you're grossly out of whack after three or four years, but we would, it's three twenty-five would just cover a portion of that, or you'd have to delay implementation, but you'd at least be able to do something prior to the January-one, twenty-twenty-seven. Is the worst, you know, we've, in the history of the city, we've been in a situation before where we're holding a pay study in September or October of a year with no real budgetary answer to implement until the following year. And then you're really, then you're a year and a half behind when you adopted the thing that said you were going to get caught up. So, you know, I'm not advocating one way or the other, but I just want to give context to the relative side, what three point, what three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars represents is about a one point five percent adjustment.
So that's more of an orange?
Yeah, because we did it one percent. We had a one percent adjustment at that time when we, we came up with one percent right away and.
But you're saying, Commissioner Andrew, that on thirteen, that we should be able to have HR or whoever determine whether we need that instead of hiring a consultant?
No, no, no. I'm saying, I'm saying the fifty thousand dollars, I mean, I mean, depending on that, I mean, I don't know how soon we'll have the information. But I think internally, we're also going to know, are we holding steady? I mean, are all these things, I mean, is dollars the only, you know, that's what I'm saying, but we don't, I've not seen eternal figures, internal figures as far as retention and recruitment. Now, it seems like with the employee newsletter and that number of new hires, that we seem to be a preferred place to work. And I'm hoping that's the case, and I hope that part of that's pay, I mean, it's not all. Hopefully, it's leadership and, you know, the management of the city too, so, but.
Okay. So fourteen would remain, I guess.
And thirteen would remain?
I would say thirteen can, can go if, if we have resources within internally that could help determine that.
So thirteen, maybe fifty thousand?
See, I would do the opposite.
I'm the same way as Commissioner Andrew, I do the opposite.
Yeah, I would do the fifty thousand, that's a cheap figuring out, you know.
So if, if we do the fifty thousand, we get the survey back and the survey says we're off by two percent, then we wouldn't have, then it's a survey that's just great information, I don't know what we would do.
We do have the use funds, they've already said, one point five-five we're up, one point whatever we're up, and another six point one-six. So if we had to come up with dollars, I mean, those are, those are available revenues that we conservatively put in there. I mean, if, but I mean, I'm serious, we had that pay study less than three years ago. I can't imagine.
But it is, but the three hundred and twenty-five thousand's a placeholder. I mean, it's an adjustment.
I'm saying if we're trying it, yeah. I mean, I would love to keep it.
I would say the, I would say the fifty thousand's is pretty cheap figured to get information on, to figure out where we're at, to be competitive.
And just kind of a comment, the three hundred and twenty-five thousand, say, say it does pan out that we're right on where we should be, that just separates, it goes into your next year's budget to kind of absolve your next year three hundred and twenty-five thousand of this same conversation. So it's not like budgeting that's going to do anything but help next year's situation that you'll, you'll find yourselves in again, if it's not needed.
Repeat that.
So if, if we budget the three hundred and twenty-five thousand this year and don't need it, they say your scale is right on, it's where it should be, we wouldn't use those dollars, they would then be held over and in cash forward to next year's budget, which would then increase the cash fund balance. And then when we get to this position next year, you have three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars you didn't spend that we anticipated spending, which would alleviate next, help with next year's budget. Because if you, to the opposite point, if you don't include the three hundred and twenty-five thousand and the recommendation is we're out of whack and you need to adjust it, you're then in first, one of the top items of your twenty-twenty-seven budget is going to be, hey, this pay plan says we're out of whack, here's what it looks like to implement all those changes. You took out the three hundred and twenty-five thousand, you're now at six hundred thousand of a whole. So the downside of not including it hurts quite a bit. Including it and then not needing it just helps your next year's budget.
But it doesn't help you get to the plateau level.
Yeah. It's just really hard because if, if the survey is included and then if it comes back normal, great. But if it comes back out of whack, it seems to me that it's just a document that we can just put on a shelf without anything to use it with. And I get that the one point five-five percent increase with the sales tax, that really goes into a much bigger scheme of the budget rather than just.
But in commissions past, we've not done that. I mean, we've always taken care of the employees and they've really, we've came up with the dollars to take care of that. So, I mean, there's never been a time that we put a pay schedule or a pay study on the back burner. I mean, as long as I've been on commission, we've never done that. We've taken the pay studies and we've reacted appropriately to keep ours. So, I mean, to say it's going to be put on the shelf, I don't, I mean, I can't imagine us as a commission would do that. I mean, so I would hope we're not, because again, I think our biggest asset is not our buildings or anything else, it's really our employees. And I don't, I have not seen us once really short-changed our employees. In fact, we've been over backwards to make sure.
I think the other factor that's tough with this is it's an unknown at this point. But if you, if you decide and leverage other items out, we'll adopt the budget in September. We will send it off and finalize our authorized allotment of how much we can spend. But then if the feedback from the survey says we're on par, the commission could say, okay, we want to bring back in X, Y, and Z that we cut out to get the three twenty-five for that piece, and still go forward and spend those dollars on what was removed in this conversation or the following conversation would be at your disposal to bring back to the table if the dollars are then unneeded based on the survey results.
So is it consensus to keep the three twenty-five and the fifty, and we'll move on? And we can always come back, circle back to these, okay?
Yeah.
Item twelve is the downtown development fund. We have thirty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixteen cents remaining in that fund. What are we thinking on that?
Can we recapture that fund?
Yeah, I'd like to close it out.
You can.
I would like to close it out too.
I'd like to close it out.
Okay. Number eleven is the transfer of the general fund to the rec reserve for fifty thousand?
When we originally did this, we did this so that the Garden Rapids, so that keep it, keep it new and shiny, we would do extra things all the time. And, I mean, and I know that, I talked to Jared, and I know that over time, you know, pools lose their, you know, their shiny and the new, newest thing. But I, I mean, the thing here is that's, that's what that was, that's what we committed to, so we could do different things and make sure that we kept it up and, you know, so that we didn't run into this big giant issue again. But again, I mean, if this is a lever we need to pull, then I mean, it's something that I mean, I'd be willing to. I mean, I'd rather us keep the reserve in there, just because I think we're going to need to keep the pool over, for five years except for three years.
So the idea on this one is more so on services, if there was an interruption of revenues for the recreation, we can still provide same level of service. The pool in the aquatics budget, anything left over in the capital line there is transferred over and held for anything down the road. So there is a pool item that we kind of hold funds, but this is more so on the kind of the rainy day, should we experience something similar that would interrupt the, the operation of recreation.
Is this in that, is this in that chart of funds you have listed that might help the commission to know what the existing balance is? Can you?
It would be five, eight, four.
Five, eight, four, which is probably not legible on that screen up there, but.
Five, eight, four.
It's starting balance, January twenty-twenty-four was four hundred and ten thousand in the fund.
And have we made a transfer in this budget year?
We have not.
So theoretically, you would have this, this year's and next year's if you wanted to, or.
So you'd have a hundred thousand.
A portion of both, you would, I mean, it doesn't have to be an all or nothing.
Correct.
Fifty thousand, but you've got two years' worth of fifty to play with.
I would like to see, I think, seventy-five thousand dollars would, would be a good middle ground for me. That would be, is that this year, next year, or the next year and the year after?
Dealer's choice, yeah. And you, just to be clear, seventy-five, to withdraw seventy-five or to leave it at seventy-five rather than a hundred over the two years, or to take seventy-five out over the two years?
Over the two years.
Spread twenty-five out over both years?
Yeah.
What, what does, so like, you talk about rainy day funds, so did you anticipate an amount that the recreation would need to commit to continuing if something catastrophic happened?
Previously, this, this fund came over with the Recreation Commission. It was their kind of capital improvement fund, their reserve fund. And so we, we had utilized it to purchase the golf carts for the golf course, we used it to purchase a few different things for recreation, so I think a park improvement. And so it was used along the way, and so we have just carried the practice of transferring an amount to the fund to keep the fund balance up for either large capital things for recreation or after COVID, that was kind of the original plan. Then COVID, we saw an interruption of their ability to run programming and bring in revenues.
No fees.
And there was no, no dollars coming in, but we were still expensing for the salaries and the cost of these programs. So the, the concept shifted for us to say, if we have this kind of reserve fund for the operation, should we see an eruption of revenue from the programming, we could still facilitate maintaining the costs that the recreation experiences. But as for a target figure, I don't think we have a target figure.
I'd be more inclined, if we did look at that one, to look at fifty thousand next year and then fifty thousand in twenty-seven.
So a hundred thousand total?
Mm-hmm.
Is that amenable to everybody?
So that would be keep, keep fifty thousand transferred this year, but then remove next year's.
Yes, right.
Twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven.
Which would be fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand towards.
You'd say fifty thousand, right?
Yes.
Because I, I mean, you, you get to half a million, then you'd be able to.
Right. So then just for this year's budget, the calculation would be fifty thousand.
Okay. Item ten is the additional funding of five hundred thousand for the.
I'm sorry, Mayor, was there, Tom offered, Commissioner Wen offered up something, Commissioner Ortiz on that one, was there?
A consensus for.
Kind of a consensus around that for just planning purposes? I know you've got several more meetings to discuss this, but I don't want to shut down the discussion.
I thought there was more of a consensus towards fifty thousand.
Thanks. Okay, just checking.
It's kind of, it's kind of a working meeting right now.
Yeah.
Kind of working through this. So, yeah, just keep asking questions. So we're good on the fifty thousand then?
Yes.
For item eleven. Item ten is the additional funding of five hundred thousand budgeted for the street rehabilitation projects and improvements.
Yeah, this is one I really, I want to hold.
Yeah, I think we keep.
We've got to start.
I know it was the, you know, we had that meeting and it talked about budgeting, you know, two million to two point five million and we're only doing five hundred thousand.
Yeah, I just.
Would you guys be open to funding four hundred thousand or four fifty instead of five hundred thousand?
I'd be open to going to this at the end after we've already gone to all of our yellows and if we still need to looking at it.
Okay.
But yeah, I, the roads, I mean, unfortunately, our streets, if you don't, if we don't take care of them, I mean, we could see. And I, you know, I just, I know that that gets away from me really quick and it's an easy way because, but you know, oftentimes I, this is one thing that we've cut so many times. And I would just rather, again, if the last resort, so.
Is that okay with everybody if we just skip this one, go back and kind of make it a rounding, rounding? Hopefully not, but we'll see. Okay. Item nine, budget currently incorporates utilizing the projected excess revenue of point one five sales tax on the twenty five, twenty six funding capital improvement projects. It's two hundred thousand dollars to be transferred this year because we reduced it last year to that amount because that's, we had to meet the budget needs and then four hundred thousand in twenty twenty six. But we have the three hundred and fifty thousand though, right, for the RHID, which adds to the mix.
I mean, if we could do like the two hundred thousand rather than the four hundred thousand, the next year, maybe it's two hundred thousand or two hundred thousand and then. But and maybe the CIPs, I mean, you know, we really have to sit there and say, what do we want? I mean, I'm glad a couple of things are going to have other funding sources. I mean, the only one on that list that really seems, and I, I, when we toured the New York Fire Station, I asked specifically to see the decon room. And I'm hoping it can come under budget than, you know, I mean, there other than the five hundred thousand that's budgeted for it because, you know, I mean, hoping it doesn't cost that much for a decon room here. But to me, I think that might be an option. The only one on the CIP that I really thought we should do is the fire, so.
So generally the RHID should, would go back to the general fund?
This is the first one. So.
This is the first.
You'll kind of set a precedent for maybe what the intent of the commission could be. You could change that down the road. But with, kind of like Matt talked about earlier in the meeting, the timing of a CID year, an RHID year, a TIF, you won't turn it off until the dollars are absolutely recovered and in to reimburse the developer. And so then at that point, we indicate to turn it off, but there's already tax collections happening. And a lot of the time, if it happens in the fall, there's going to be a new assessment that's already in process that we can't really stop. So you'll have another year of collection. So that's what kind of happened here was the, the timing just caused the excess revenues for, until it finally ends to come to the city. And other cities do different things. We've kind of reached out. Some cities have used them for projects like this. Other cities have dispersed them amongst the taxing entities proportionally to say, hey, this would have been dollars that each should have had. The idea between, behind us putting it into the CIP was these are projects that generally go towards community benefit that all would enjoy or all would rereward from. So projects like parks and things like that would be kind of taking those dollars that would have been otherwise allocated or next year will be allocated all the individual taxing entities and putting it towards something each can find benefit from. And so if, it's at your discretion how you would like to use those dollars.
You said. You said to.
So, so we do the two hundred thousand like we did and then we reduce next.
Okay.
I mean, I do like the idea of sitting in the three hundred and five thousand.
Three hundred and fifty thousand.
Three hundred and fifty thousand. I do like that going toward the CIP projects, but, and that would get us a little bit farther down the line on those, but.
What are your thoughts?
I'm in agreement with Commissioner Under. I'd like to see two hundred thousand this year, two hundred thousand next year, so a two hundred thousand dollar reduction.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Ortiz?
I'd be okay with that, yeah.
Commissioner Wen?
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm fine with that. So two hundred thousand. Number eight is general fund cash carryover to twenty twenty six is three million, seven hundred thousand. This is an increase of hundred thousand over twenty twenty four. The financial policy talks about, but if we consider the budgeted savings, staff would advise either twenty five thousand or fifty thousand reduction instead of the full one hundred thousand. I was thinking fifty thousand.
I was thinking fifty thousand.
Okay. Is that okay with everybody? Is that kind of a consensus unless somebody wants to argue about it?
Can I ask?
Or fight for it?
Clarification on the one before.
Yes.
So on number nine, with two hundred thousand in twenty twenty four, five, twenty twenty thousand, twenty twenty six, using two hundred thousand each year from the point one five in addition to the three hundred and fifty thousand from the RHID, so five hundred and fifty thousand allotted this year, two hundred thousand next year.
Right.
Okay. So a savings of two hundred thousand.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Okay.
That, that's kind of how I took it. And then that helps move some of those projects a little bit ahead. But then we're, we're saving to try to close that gap on the budget. Okay, perfect. Everybody in agreement? Okay, eight, and then seven is the different staffing for zoo, traffic and airport.
What was eight again? Sorry.
Eight was fifty thousand reduction instead of the.
Okay.
It was the staff advised either a twenty five, fifty or a hundred thousand. And I kind of thought go in between for fifty.
Sure.
On that, and everybody kind of shook their head yes.
Yeah.
Number seven is the staffing at the zoo, traffic and airport.
The only thing I would say, if we did any of the staffing, the zookeeper, maybe I mean, add one on this year and then maybe one on next year rather than two at once. And I know, I mean, I, I do think the educational specialist really had a lot of value, so I'd rather see a zookeeper and an educational specialist. But maybe we do one and maybe that could potential savings. I think the traffic and then the airport, I think both of these are, are, they have some value, value definitely. I'm not saying they don't need maybe another zookeeper, but maybe this is a way to.
Right. Any other commissioners' thoughts?
I agree with the zoo, getting one zookeeper and an education specialist. Can you go through the number three with the airport?
So the position is currently budgeted as a part time and the request is to transition it to a full time staff. And so the cost is less because we're already budgeting salary benefits. There's just an increase in the allocation of hours. And so that's why it's, it's less than the other two. So it's a request to transition that position to a full time staff.
Gotcha.
Is that, is that a, so that part time person, is it the same person that's going into transition into a full time or is it going to be a new person?
In theory, it could be both because right now it's been season both part time and full time. But they do happen to have a part time that's interested in going full time, but that's a timing issue and.
Yeah.
Isn't necessarily pertinent to the commission's deliberation. It's their overall staffing of twenty three positions right now is nineteen full time for part time. This would take that to twenty full time and three part time.
And regardless of if that individual were to want to still be able to shift, the, the evaluation is that the staffing level necessary would accommodate a needed full time position instead of that part time role that's been existing.
Okay. Are we close?
Yeah.
Are we close at all?
No.
No.
No, not, not even, no, I was calculating. I mean, if we.
Need a little running total for.
Well, I would have, but I, you know.
I would tell you your run total with what you've said so far.
Four hundred and thirty seven thousand is what I've got. The, the thirty five thousand, seven fifty across twenty five and twenty six, so that would make it seventy one thousand?
No, that's total.
Oh, that's total between those two years?
Their request is to implement the change in August of twenty five. That number represents about twenty thousand increase next year and ten thousand this year.
Yeah. Okay.
I think starting with the zoo is a little bit easier. Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I think starting with the zoo is a bit easier. I think just only having one zookeeper and one education specialist is a little more palatable.
Hopefully the one zookeeper will be really credible on the.
I think the intent, a little background on the zookeeper position is like a turn, a two key, turnkey safety kind of recommendation from the zoo associations of kind of increased, updating practices. Right now they do radio calls. And so it's, it's, that is the reason why they're asking for the two is so that they have enough bodies for the kind of the dangerous animals to have the, the turnkey operation. I think adding one is stepping in that direction and so.
Yeah, that may be something, we've got some meetings to break this out. We could, I don't know if Kristin's in bullpen or wants to come forward. It may be something if, if you're looking at it from a total dollar standpoint, you're like, hey, those, those three are all in the same range. Director Newland, we feel comfortable with one position or we feel comfortable with two positions. What would you pick?
Right.
Might be, might be a question that she would.
Yeah, that'd be nice. Because they're all about the same cost.
Right. I, if there were, now, if you have, you know, from a policy perspective, you have an opinion as to education versus animal care. That's, that's fine, should be, but if you're like, yeah, I'm looking at it from a dollar standpoint, I think Christie would appreciate the opportunity to weigh in on.
She's.
If you, if I get one, this is the one I want. If I get two, this is what I want. Thank you.
Good afternoon. The purpose of the request for the two keepers is, yes, the two lock, two key, but also to provide extra time for the staff who are in those roles to do other things beyond basic duties. You were talking about retention. This feeds into the retention of those staff. The education specialist is always a desire because we're always trying to send our message out. But based on staffing, security, safety needs, the way the profession is developing and retention, I'd go for the two keepers.
Thank you.
Then if we're one, if it's just one, still be a keeper?
If it's one position, it's still a keeper.
Thanks, Christie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I would, I guess I would just state it as, you know, we would be not funding sixty four thousand, four hundred and it's a dollar amount. So you can choose whether, who she wants to hire.
Or funding sixty four thousand at four hundred and she can figure out who she wants to hire, right? Instead of not funding it.
Right, right.
Right. And then, so we're taking the zookeeper, the education specialist.
And letting her pick, so we're.
And let her pick.
Right.
So one position instead of three? Is that what I'm hearing?
Is that?
Or I thought it was two instead of three.
I would, I would like.
Two instead of three.
I think I'm hearing both.
Two instead of three.
I would like two positions.
Two positions instead of three?
Two instead of three, right.
Okay.
Who, okay. Is there a consensus of two position, keeping, you want to keep two positions?
Right, and then she chooses which two positions.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry. I probably worded that both ways.
Is that a consensus amongst the commission?
Yeah.
Okay. Traffic signal technician?
I think that's important.
Okay. Well, you know, we've got to get to eight hundred and thirty six thousand.
That's why I think.
And we're only, we're only at four hundred and thirty seven.
That's why I think seventeen is going to be the important, I mean, that's what they had to do.
I think with the zookeeper position, we're sitting.
Do we need a, I mean, I know we probably do need another traffic signal technician. I mean, is it, is it something that we really definitely need or? I mean, trying to get, trying to balance a budget.
Oh, sure. I understand completely.
I mean, but.
I don't envy your position at all. There's three positions in traffic now or has been for the last, I don't know, probably ten years. I'll be bad at additional miles in traffic. We have more crosswalks. We've reduced some of the crosswalks, but their workload hasn't gone down any. But we can contract out some of that if we have to, if need be. So that would probably be the next thing we do for, I'm going to get something done. We could try to contract an hour. I would say though, in all of public works and utilities of all of the positions that we would need an additional person, we'd contract it. And I know that probably doesn't help you. And we understand that it needs to be passed. We certainly do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What's her tally?
You're at four hundred and thirty seven thousand.
With the zoo position here at five oh one.
Now we're, yeah, I forgot to add the zoo position.
Five oh one with seven hundred, so almost five oh two. And just to the, to point of number seventeen, we can, for kind of big singer finding the delta, we can definitely take that back to the general fund. Last year, we identified a lot of items to reduce. This year, in preparing the budget, the messaging was more so make sure it's coming in lean already. So I, as much as I don't anticipate there will be as much to kind of immediately go cut as there was last year. It may be one where we look at a proportionate and say, hey, there's X amount of dollars we need to cut. Our budget is X. We're reducing it by two percent and every line goes down two percent, the kind of more something along those lines rather than identifying specific items. Because I think the items that made it back into this year's budget were pretty identified as the ones that were delayed from a year and, and, and operation will somewhat be interrupted or potentially see a negative result if we don't proceed with some of those.
Okay, so where are we at on, on traffic? And we want to, we want to keep the traffic position?
Yeah, I don't.
Okay.
Or it doesn't, yeah, I'd rather see us do, I mean, a quarter of a percent reduction across everything. You could do that. I mean, that would, would that get you to your three hundred and, you know, half percent? So what would it take to get us to?
Yeah, somewhere between half and one percent, I think, maybe.
What was the item that we were going to go back to if we needed?
Thirteen, fourteen.
We were going to go back to the, to the.
Ten.
Street.
Ten, eleven and seventeen. But let's, we're, we're, we're right now on the traffic technician. Is there a consensus to keep that or?
I would like to see it kept.
Keep.
Keep?
Keep.
Keep? Okay.
I'd also, just saying, I'd also be open to going back to thirteen, fourteen as well if we end up.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a big ticket item that could.
Sure.
Move us across the finish line without having to ask departments to really shave some, some of their budgets.
Let's finish up on airport. Do we want to keep it at part time and save, save the thirty five thousand, seven hundred and fifty?
I'd rather. I would, I would want to, to keep it, I think, with our new airport with how much staff would be needed to staff that I think it's, I think it's important. Yeah, I think it's important.
Okay. Let's go back to item.
The fourteen?
Thir, well, let's start at thirteen. Unless we want to go backwards like we did, go to fourteen and then thirteen.
Yeah.
I almost feel like they almost tie it together.
I think they're, I feel like they're tied together too.
Sure.
I'm not recommending this. I just want to put it in the context. I, I would not recommend directing staff to do a pay plan. You're just, you're just redirecting fifty thousand dollars worth of resources that are already supposed to be doing something else to go do something different. I think if you want the study and you want the information, having a third party career to do it is definable to the rest of the staff. Folks, you're placing a value on the, in the, it's a market study. There's people that do this work. Not that our staff couldn't do it. It's just, we've got them hired to do other things. And if you didn't want to do the study and you thought, well, if we're fractionally off, if my debt tells me we're fractionally off. Because, and maybe you wait for that, for us to give you some other information, you know, really that difference, that three twenty five is about what Jared's identified up here as the additional one. that 325 is about what Jared's identified up here as the additional 1% and the, across the, you know, the PACE study says, well, instead of treating everything across the board, we're going to target right here because you're really behind here. Well, you have these other places you were okay with, these one or two were off. You've got some resources to go attack on the one spot. But if you're like, hey, my gut says we've done a couple of these over the last five or six years, we're probably okay. From an internal equity standpoint, we just need to make sure that overall, we're okay. You know, skipping the $50,000 on the study, putting the 325-ish amount towards the salary pool and just having that be your Jan. 1 adjustment. Well.
Yeah, I.
Could be, could be an option if you're looking to save 50, now, if you're looking to save the 325, obviously not an option.
The $50,000, I'm like, for the outside source, the study, the information I'm asking for from the staff is retention and recruitment. I'm not asking them to do that study.
We understand the range. We just couldn't do it.
Yeah. No, no, no. I'm saying that's, I'm not asking them to do the study because I, I agree with you. I think it should be a third party.
But I do think it's been brought up to eliminate the $50,000 on the study. If you're going to eliminate the $50,000 on the study, I would tell you, eliminate the 325 or apply it to the salary pool. Because our staff isn't going to be able to produce in a market comparison with our, with the top.
And from bullet point number one, that there's a value there of 275,300. That's the estimation. If you said, hey, we're going with a 3% January 1 increase instead of the budgeted 2%, that's the cost that it would take to, to increase that percentage one more to go with what it's been the last two years. So from expense number one.
Oh, okay.
There's a kind of midway down, right after, right before the red, there's 275,300. That is going either way. So if you reduced it to a 1% January 1 adjustment instead of the 2% budgeted, you'd save 275. Or if you said, hey, we don't want to do the study, we're going to just, let's stick with 3% because that's what we've done the last two years. We think that's probably keeping our scale proportionally in line with, with market. If you increase to the 1% January 1, so you go into a three instead of a two, you would end up saving 50,000 over the 325 and 50,000 for the study. So it'd be about 100,000.
Yeah, that would work for me.
Unilaterally decide to do that instead of assessing.
Forget not advocating. I'm sorry. My mic's been off for a while. Not advocating for that. It's just that it would be an option. I mean, it's the extent to which you want it to be third-party, third-party opinion on it and have it be kind of tactical or the extent to which you're, you're comfortable. So again, I understand you asked yesterday in your correspondence with me of that information. I think we'll be able to get that too. We weren't able to get it today.
And I think our intent when the, the new PACE study was adopted was three to five years doing these reviews, kind of more an in-depth review about five to seven years. With COVID, we did it quicker because it was clear and obvious. It was very out of whack very quickly. And then this time, the, the intent was because they're already in town doing another review, we could piggyback off of that and save some dollars from them already being here and already looking at some very similar data, that our, our price for that would be reduced to what it would have been otherwise. So that's the, that's kind of why I moved into the 25 as an option. Yeah. So I know where we're at, but I really would like to have a 10-minute break. I need a break, a restroom break at least for, I'm sorry.
Can I ask one question before I forget it, though?
Hurry.
I'm sorry. Yeah. I'm going to speak.
Yeah, I know.
No. So just so that I'm, so the $325,000, is that allocating for like positions that we've kind of lost? And do those dollars go back into the, the pay scale?
It's a placeholder.
No, it is, it is literally a placeholder number that if a study comes back and says, you guys need to move the, change the pay of these 25 positions right out of the gate. And the, the annualized sum of that or the remainder of the year's sum of that is 400,000. You've already got 325 identified somewhere to go move in and attack that problem.
To adjust the pay for those, for those.
It's a hard dollar amount. It's.
The only, the only reason it's 325 is the last time we did this, we had 325 as a number. And it probably, in one of these very same discussions, started out as 500. And the commission got down to it and said, we need 175,000 to make the budget. Let's make the 500, one 325.
But we, we do not endorse that that is an accurate figure for what.
No, not at all.
It is strictly a placeholder.
All right.
I take, we'll take a five-minute recess. We'll be back.
Yeah.
We'll be back in session at 3:20.
Walk, don't run. You're going to get hurt.
Walk, don't run, you're going to get hurt.
Okay. We were talking about the pay study on 13 and the 14 of the placeholder. So if we, if we reduce the $50,000 and not do the pay study and then do the 1%, that would save us $100,000, right?
Correct.
Is that amenable to everybody? Because we can always go back.
So for clarity in item number one, you'd actually be adding instead of cutting a percent to the salary pool, but you wouldn't be doing 13 and 14?
Right, right.
And there's a net $100,000 you can grab towards levy, getting down to level mills?
And I, and I mean, I mean, knowing that, I mean, I do want to make sure that we continue to keep the street funded, but again, I mean, I mean, this is maybe the time that we say, you know, I mean, the 400,000 rather than the 500,000. But I do, I do want to fund as much as we can and continue to keep that funded, but.
I would rather go 400,000, that gets us, that gets us closer to the 836,000.
Yeah, exactly.
Is that okay with that? I mean, okay, 100,000, it's 100,000 savings from the streets going from 500,000 to 400,000. That's, we're now at 701,049, 702,000 roughly, right?
Correct.
So, and we're at 836,790.
What was the other place that you said we could save, Mayor? I don't remember.
We have 135, 136,000 that we have to figure out where to come up with.
We have to come up with now, or is that something we wait on number 17 to come back with some adjustments?
We could do that, I think. I'm open to 17 and asking staff to, with whatever remainder we have, for them to help decide what to reduce.
Is everybody in agreement on that, commission-wise? Can we do, Steph, are you guys okay with that?
Yes, you've given us quite a bit of direction, I think we can definitely prepare. The next question I would have is just timing. Would you rather have another discussion to finalize the details before you indicate your intent to exceed the revenue rate and propose mill levy or accomplish that today? And then we can come back with the feedback you've given and at the August meeting when we set the hearing date, or we approve the publication for the notice for hearings, we would then have our final plan and the commission could tinker with it at any level that they wish to at that point, but we would have the publication ready to go out indicating the mill levy that you've chosen and whatnot.
So Jared, and just to make sure, so you know all of the valuations, those, all of those figures are in, there's no waiting, okay. I just want to make sure, so all that's in, okay?
Yes, now, all that we based off of, now, this is the preliminary estimation for the valuation, so when you set your mill levy, it's based off of this value. If the valuation is in November, the final valuation is slightly different, the mill levy will be adjusted to accommodate the dollars that you have anticipated to need in the budget to accomplish that. So that's where that slight variation for our mill levy isn't exactly the same figure every year, is due to that final valuation adjustment. But we have what we need to be able to present you a final budget for your review and approval.
So you got, you got everything that you needed from us?
Before you today would be to choose one of the alternatives, whether you're going to exceed the revenue rate, and then if so, what is the rate you would propose be published in the notification that the county will send out to all residents.
Yeah, I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the indication of revenue neutral rate intent, stating the city intends to exceed the revenue neutral rate and define the mill levy rate of, I gotta get that back up there, 38.
That was 483.
3843.
38.48.
38.483, indicating a flat. Sorry, I didn't get back down to here. To be included on the publication sent to the citizens.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And thanks staff for all of their, their work. I know this is tough, it was tough for the commissioners as well. We know everybody's valuable and all the projects are important, but trying to fill that gap is, is always tough. So, thank you. Okay, consent agenda.
Yeah, unless there's something the commission would like to pull and visit about separately, the appropriate motion would be to consider and approve consent agendas items 13A through 13C.
I move to approve consent agenda items 13A through 13C.
There has been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Just caveat, is anybody here for item 13C on the nuisance? Just to make sure, I know I was thinking about that last time when we changed this, probably need to add that, just to make sure if anybody was here to have a discussion on that. No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. City Commissioner reports, Commissioner Landgraf.
So I just want to start by saying it's really great being able to do a tour of the Humane Society. First, I just want to say thank you to them for allowing us there, giving us the full tour, being able to see all the different animals. Said they had, I believe it's 70 dogs right now and 80 cats. So if anyone wants to adopt, there is 70 dogs and 80 cats right there. Said they're getting ready to go into kitten season. I know Commissioner Ortiz would like to adopt all of them, but he just can't.
Can't.
But also, at the fire station number three ribbon cutting, I think the turnout there was tremendous. It was really great being able to see all people from the community there. And what was really special is the number of little kids there, having the museum there for the children to be able to see at the fire station and be able to, potentially we could inspire some kids to one day decide, I want to be a firefighter. I think it's really cool being able to have that as part of the fire station. Also, I just want to thank all the commissioners here regarding the budget discussion, it's really good discussion, wasn't any hostility, wasn't any negativity, it's really just collaboration. I really do appreciate being able to have that. And finally, I just want to wish everyone a happy and safe 4th of July. If you're looking to, for events that are going on on the 4th and Garden City, I know the Facebook page has posted events and there's just a bunch of different events going on. So if you're looking for something to do, there's a good place to start.
Thank you. Commissioner Wynn.
Yeah, for me, last weekend was a kind of busy weekend, I guess two weekends ago. Early in the morning that Saturday, we had the 5K for Zebra Castaneda, and I was very appreciative of city staff working hard with their families and their communities. And I was very impressed by Nathaniel Taper and all the organizers for offering the proceeds from that 5K back to our community and helping with court renovations near by the zoo. And that same day, Matt Allen and I, we were in for a heat wave with Blue Tide. Matt took the morning session, 9:00 AM, about 1:00, 2:00 PM, and I think I got the short end there.
I think you got the short end.
But it was incredible to see all these young swimmers from different parts of the community, all the, even from Texas, to come to Garden City just to swim. And how much a pool can bring people together really impresses me. I was there until about 8:00 or 9:00 PM, but it was joyful, it was all worth it to see their smiles and to have the honor of announcing first place, second place, and third place, and hearing these many cheers as they ran by. All last week and a couple days the week before, a couple days, about two weeks ago, I was in Larned, and last week I was in Scott City with Prayer and Action. We had over, in the two weeks combined, there were almost 100 kiddos, high school kids, just going out mowing lawns, pulling weeds, and we ended up painting four houses. And I am beyond impressed by how much that can impact a community, that these community members embraced us with loving arms and showered with so much food and opened their pools to us, and it was a joy. 6:20 day, incredible, just so full of people, so full of love, very appreciative of that. And then with the fire station hose uncoupling, I was very impressed by all the hard work that staff has put in, especially Aaron Stilwagen with all the long hours, helping with the museum and getting everything organized. It was really fantastic to be there.
Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz.
Yeah, I think, I think we're going along with impressions here, so I think I'll start with that. I've got some pretty good impressions as far as from out-of-towners, you know, traveling with my daughter's softball team, we've kind of run into people in Hayes or Great Bend or Solana, and we've, we've heard some great feedback about Garden City, and that's wonderful to hear. Just the fact that there's lots of opportunities, lots of things to do here, lots of places to eat, and lots of functions to go to. So if you're bored in Garden City, I think we've always said it, you shouldn't be because there's lots of things to go to and lots of events to attend to. So, yeah, same thing as the city, as the commissioners have spoke, with the fire station grand opening was a really good success, and that project came in under budget and before scheduled time. So congratulations to the firemen and the EMS teams on a great building that they'll be able to strive in and look forward to work out of. I feel for them on all of the tours that they're going to have to give within this first year, but I think I was doing a good job of giving a little tour myself. I know the ins and outs of that building, as our firm had our hands in that, and, but we, we really appreciate the efforts from all the subcontractors that were involved and all of the contractors work from across the construction. They were here earlier and I think they were hoping that we would got done it too, but many thanks goes to them too. We appreciate them showing up for the event, structural engineers as well as the electrical, mechanical, and plumbing engineers. So there's lots of people to thank, but I don't want to go through that again, as I already did, kind of, but just what a, what a great day to be in Garden City and appreciate Chairman Jerry Schultz's comments on, on this is truly for the men and women in uniform, for them to, to enjoy this fire, this new fire station and EMS station. So I did have the pleasure to celebrate my granddaughter's first birthday last Wednesday, which was amazing. One-year-olds starting to take their first steps as well, so it's a joy to be around little ones. And as you mentioned to Commissioner Landgraf on all the little ones there at the fire station, that was amazing to see. I think I really appreciate the, the collaboration and the teamwork within our staff, Matt and others who have those meetings and discussions with the county and with other stakeholders in the community, Guard City Community College, they're doing wonderful things, and I just, I just applaud them on, we've always said it, we've always kind of brought it up every meeting almost about the collaboration, and we just really want to let you know that we do appreciate those discussions and feedback back to us. And so with that, I think that's almost all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Enri.
So I also just want to echo, I know we've talked about the Humane Society and, yeah, we walk, I walked out without any dogs and a court and no cats, so that was really good. I, you know, the one thing I really appreciated about the Humane Society was the amount of volunteers and the volunteer hours. The dollars that we, we paid toward the Humane Society, you know, we could not afford the volunteer hours. And so really, it's the volunteers that make up the Humane Society, make it successful, and just the treatment of the animals and the treatment of the staff for one another was, was really incredible. I really appreciated it. The, you know, this, we talked about a lot of opportunities to collaborate in the EMS, you know, being in Affine County, and then our fire department, Garden City Fire Department. The new fire station was beyond incredible. It was really, really, really well done, and the turnout, I really enjoyed seeing, you know, people who come out. There were so many people who came out to really see what was going on. And the thing, I think this idea, the excitement that was built around not only the opportunity to see what Garden City is doing, but really this idea of, you know, they talked about, you know, promises and promises kept, you know, dollars and promises kept. So I thought that was really, you know, really showed that those sales tax dollars are really doing the things that, that we voted for them to do. I really do appreciate all the work on the budget. I know that Jared spent, I talked to him an hour and a half, and at the end of it, I thought to myself, I felt bad for him, just because of all the information, but I really appreciate the overall, the staff just putting together the budget figures. And I know that 830, 856 or however much that was, seemed like a lot, but you know, it was a lot less than the year before. So that was one thing I was celebrating and praising God for, I thought, no, this is really, really good, this less. I do want to say the 4th of July, I knew, you know, fireworks have started and people have been really kind and considerate. I just hope that we continue to be that way. There are still, there are still fields that are unharvested, please pop the firecrackers or the fireworks in town so that we can get all the wheat and everything in. I know that harvest is in full swing, so please be careful out there, I know with the big harvest trucks out there. The last thing I wanted to say is I really appreciate the way in which we honor not only our first responders, but also the way in which we honor the people in our community. There are a lot of people who talk about, hey, this doesn't happen everywhere, and especially with the partnerships between the city and the county, and also just the way our fire, our fire department and our police departments get along. So not only we bless a living Garden City, but boy, it's a great day to be here today.
Thank you. Wrapping up, just want to, kind of like all the other commissioners, very momentous day in the community, hoping another fire station, you don't do that very often, early 20 years in the making, with the passage of the sales tax, it became a reality, and like Commissioner Enri said, you know, promise is made and promise is kept. We kept that promise to not only do that, but all of the other projects that were part of that sales initiative. Really, it's celebrating the present, but also the past and the future, future growth of the community, but the past of the fire station. That museum is, is really awesome. The 2025 Consumer Confidence Report is out on the city water supply, a lot of good information in that report if you receive it. Attended the homeless discussion that the county put on to address that issue in the county and the community, there were a number of city staff also present at that event as well. A lot of good, kind of first start on, on just discussion on kind of where we're at and kind of looking on how to resolve that issue. I also attended the freshman legislators' discussion, which they toured the community and then visited on various topics, not only about the area, but kind of the state as a whole. The Kansas Association of Counties was there, as well as the League of Kansas Municipalities, and really kind of just educating the freshman class on, they're going around the state and touring, and Garden City was one of those stops. So great event and heard a lot of great comments about our community from those legislators. Again, like the other commissioners said, just have a safe and happy 4th of July holiday. Just remember that fireworks can only be discharged from 10:00 AM in the morning until 10 o'clock in the evening. 11, I mean, yes, 11:00 AM in the morning till 11:00 AM, yeah, I've even got it written down here. 11 to 11, and that through Saturday, July 5th. On that note, thank you for the clarification. Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
Sorry, do you want that turned out to the.
Oh, thank you. I think that, I think it would have probably died.